Okay, Mr. Marshall. You are good to go. We are live. We are recording. Amherst Media is here. And we have a call.
All right, we're off. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of May 18th, 2022. My name is Doug Marshall and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available livestream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and as extended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite our best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the Town of Amherst website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and then place yourself back on mute. Maria Chow.
Present.
Jack Gemsec, we know is absent tonight. Tom Long.
Present.
Andrew McDougall.
Present.
I, Doug Marshall, am present. Shannon McGowan.
Here.
And Johanna Newman.
Present.
Board members, if a tech, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause temporarily to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your raised hand and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. The general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment can also be heard at other times during the meeting when determined appropriate. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can typically express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. All right, so first item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our past meetings. And the only minutes that I see on the agenda for tonight is the May 4th minutes from our last meeting. Board members, any discussion about those minutes? Andrew, I see your hand.
Yeah, I, I did want to call out on page seven, the adjournment time of 7:52, just as a reminder how nice it was that we finished up at 7:52. But not kidding aside, I am, I'll put a motion out there to approve it.
All right, thank you for that motion. Would anybody like to second the motion? Johanna.
I will second the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Johanna. Board members, any other, any comments on the minutes of them? How nice and short the meeting was and how complete the minutes are? All right, I don't see any hands. We'll go through and vote the minutes up or down. Starting with Maria.
Approve.
All right, Tom.
Prove.
Andrew.
I.
Janet.
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay. And Johanna.
Approve.
And I'm an approve as well. So the motion passes with, looks like five votes in favor, one abstention, and one absent. All right, so the time now is 6:38, and we'll move to the second item on the agenda. This is the general public comment period. And as mentioned earlier, this is for, we're, we're open to having comments on items that are not on our agenda for this evening. If you have comments on items on the agenda, please hold them until we get to that item in the meeting. So I see nine in public attendees. Does anyone want to make a public comment at this time? Okay, I see no hands for public comment. We will move on to the third item in the agenda. The time is now 6:38, I guess. And let's see, all right. So this item was advertised for 6:35, so we're not starting early. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding zoning bylaw, Article 13, demolition delay for structures of historical or architectural significance with the historic commission, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rescinding Article 13, demolition delay for structures of historical or architectural significance for the purposes of adopting a similar bylaw as a general bylaw. So just to clarify, this is, this will be a vote to rescind Article 13 of the zoning bylaw, which makes way for a new general bylaw on the same topic. Are there any board member disclosures? Not seeing any. Chris, would you like to introduce this topic?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Brestrop. I'm the planning director. And we're here tonight to hold a public hearing on the removal of Article 13, demolition delay for structures of historical or architectural significance for the purpose of adopting a similar bylaw as a general bylaw. I regret that Ben Breger, the planner who's been working with the Historical Commission on this amendment, and Jane Wald, Chair of the Historical Commission, cannot join us tonight. They are attending the Historical Commission meeting that's occurring simultaneously with the planning board meeting. The Historical Commission and the Planning Department have been discussing this zoning amendment for several years, and the commission supports this change and is ready to move forward. The planning board is familiar with this proposal, having heard about it last spring and again earlier this year. The demolition delay bylaw is proposed to be repealed from the zoning bylaw, and a new preservation bylaw is proposed to be added to the general bylaw. Reasons for taking this out of the zoning bylaw and putting it into the general bylaw include the practice in most cities and towns in Massachusetts is to have this bylaw in the general bylaw. Another one is Massachusetts Historical Commission recommends this as a general bylaw rather than as a zoning bylaw. Another reason is the his, the preservation bylaw is similar to or akin to the local historic district bylaw, which is in the general bylaw. A fourth reason for general bylaws, any appeal of a general bylaw is made to the court system rather than to the zoning board of appeals. And the last point is that the preservation of existing buildings is relevant to zoning, but it's not a core focus of zoning, and therefore it's more suited to being in the general bylaw. So the planning board is being asked to make a recommendation to the town council on the change to the zoning bylaw. While the planning board does not have a formal role in the adoption of a new general bylaw, the board is welcome to offer comments to town council about the new general bylaw. In your packets, you have the existing Article 13 proposed to be rescinded, and the new article proposed to be added to the general bylaw. The planning department has reviewed the language of the new general bylaw with our attorney Joel Bard of KP Law on at least two occasions in September of 2021 and in April of 2022. And the recommendations of Attorney Bard have been incorporated into the new language of the general bylaw. With regard to the general bylaw, it does the following. It creates a new certificate for applicants that will help to separate the Historical Commission process from the building department process. The building department grants a demolition permit. It also creates a two-step review process. And the first step is a determination as to whether a building is significant or not. And if it is found to be significant, a public hearing is held to determine whether the building should be preferably preserved. Once that decision has been made about whether the building should be preferably preserved or not, either a demolition authorization is issued or a preservation order is issued. The CRC or Community Resources Committee has reviewed the proposed rescission and the new language. On April 14th, 2022, the CRC held a public hearing on the rescission of Article 13 and the addition of the new general bylaw. The CRC voted unanimously on April 14th to recommend that the council rescind the zoning bylaw, Article 13, with an effective date upon the effective date of the adoption of a similar general bylaw. They didn't vote on the new bylaw at that time because the Historical Commission was still working on some final language. So the planning staff met with two members of the Historical Commission during that time period and worked out the final language. On May 12th, 2022, the CRC reviewed the revisions to the new language and voted unanimously to recommend the town council adopt the new language of the general bylaw. And the planning board has the new language in its packet. Town council will be holding its first reading on the repeal and replacement of the demolition delay and preservation of historically significant buildings bylaw changes on June 6th, and then hold a second reading on June 13th, at which they hope to take a vote. I would suggest, once you've had a chance to talk about this, that I have a motion that I think might be appropriate. I won't read the motion right now, but when you get to the point of voting, I can read the motion. I think I sent it to Doug this evening. So thank you for listening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. I actually have a question right off the bat, prompted by your statement that town council is going to be reading this in the near future. Since this, since what we're, what we're to deliberate tonight is a change to the zoning, doesn't town council need to refer this to us at some point?
It was referred.
It was referred already?
Yes.
Okay, so the hearing we're in this evening is then within the time duration?
Yes, the referral occurred on March 21st.
Okay. So we're still within the time period during which the public hearings for CRC and planning board need to occur?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. All right, so I, so our vote tonight will be to make a recommendation to town council up or down, or with changes or something else?
On the rescission, yes.
Okay.
You can offer recommendations on the other part too, if you choose to.
Right, but those are, those will be kind sort of advisory. Okay, thanks. Janet, I see your hand.
So you may have just answered my question. So because it's a zoning bylaw, and we're voting on whether it should be rescinded, do, we can vote, I mean presumably we're saying we're okay on that because we approve or like the new language of the new amendment. So are we gonna vote on that also, or is that just up to us? Will, will council, town council refer that to us, or are we just gonna send along?
I think the new language that's in the general bylaws, the approval and adoption of those general bylaws does not go through the planning board.
Okay, so I'd be, I'd be very comfortable if we also tonight voted to recommend, and I guess I could make a motion to recommend that this new version of the demolition, the preservation of historically significant buildings by law be, you know, passed by the town council. So I'd like to see these, those things paired.
Okay. All right, oh, it looks like Nate has joined us. Welcome, Nate. I, I hope your athletic event this afternoon went well. All right, so, you know, board members, any, any conversation about this? I do know this is, we've talked about this a couple of times. We have reviewed the proposed general bylaw previously, and there were comments made, and I know Janet met with planning staff about some of the concerns she had. So we've been through this a fair amount, but it's been a little while since we talked about it. Does anybody want to talk about it more tonight? Don't all raise your hand at once. Okay. I'm gonna, Janet, I guess yours, yours is the hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. So since we discussed this at length in our last meeting sometime in the dark winter, I think the, I think there's only been one major change, which is going from, you know, 50 years to 75 years. Are there, like, and I was hoping Chris could, or Nate could talk to us about that. Are there any other changes to this language, like significant changes in this draft that I'm holding from our last draft?
May I?
Chris, go ahead.
So there have been a few minor changes. One of the changes was that the determination of significance, whether a building is significant or not, has been, the language has been made more flexible, so it's really up to the Historical Commission to decide whether it's the whole commission or a designee from the Historical Commission or a designee from the planning department staff makes a determination as to significance. So this bylaw doesn't spell out that particular thing. It leaves it up to the commission. Another thing that this bylaw does is that it removes the third portion of the definition of demolition. So initially, we had demolition in three parts. The first part was initiating the work of total destruction of an entire building with the intent of completing that. The second part was any act of pulling down, destroying, removing or raising 25% or more of the front, back, or side elevations of the building. The gross square footage of each elevation, including wall area, roof area, and exposed foundation area calculated separately. And then the third one was for buildings listed on the Amherst Inventory of Historic Buildings, accepted by a vote of the commission and updated periodically, the act of changing, modifying, or removing important architectural elements from a building, which elements define the historical integrity of the design, including but not limited to doors, windows, stoops, porches, chimneys, and similar elements, except for exemptions as found in Section C3 of the bylaw. So what the planning staff and the Historical Commission agreed to was to remove that Part C for now. There is no authenticated inventory of historic buildings. We have pieces here and there, and Nate might be able to speak to that better than I can. It includes about, I think, 1,200 buildings altogether, some of which you would not recognize as being historically significant. So the board, the commission felt that it needed to have, spend more time, the commission and the planning staff, developing the inventory and voting on the inventory, having embedded by the commission before we relied on it in any way. And if we don't have the inventory to rely on, we're also opening ourselves up for, you know, potentially hundreds of reviews. Because, you know, we could be reviewing things like Echo Hill houses that have been around since the 1960s. So we don't really want to get into that at this time. So we've decided with the Historical Commission to remove that Section C. And the CRC thinks that's a good idea as well. And so that, that was also a change. Trying to think if there were any other changes. The delay period for the demolition delay remains at 12 months. So that hasn't changed. Nate, can you think of any other changes?
No, I was just looking through the packet. I didn't see any. I mean, they're still the same, you know, we try to streamline definitions, the process and everything. And so all those, you know, there nothing has really changed there, but from what was, you know, what's in the body, you know, what's currently there to what's being proposed is a big change, but not the different versions that the planning board reviewed. I think the declaration of policy or the purpose, I think there was some minor changes, but nothing, nothing else, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Chris and Nate. Janet.
So does the CRC support adding that back, the sec, the, if, once there is a historic, authenticated historic inventory that you can't remove, like iconic pieces of it? Is there support for that idea that you'll be trying?
Excuse me. Raise my hand.
Thanks, Janet. Chris?
Um, the CRC really didn't discuss whether they would support that addition back again. That was really an idea that the planning staff discussed with the Historical Commission as something that could be done in the future when the inventory is, has been established.
Thanks, Chris. And thanks, Janet. Okay, board members, any other? Any other discussion? All right, so I guess we'll move right on to a vote. Chris, shall I read the motion that you, or do you want to read it?
You can read it if you have it up, yep.
I do. All right, I'll make the motion on behalf of the board. I move that the planning board recommends that town council rescind Article 13, demolition delay for structures of historical or architectural significance for the purpose of adopting a similar bylaw as a general bylaw with an effective date upon the effective date of the adoption of the similar bylaw as a general bylaw. And so this is, so our recommendation is contingent on town council adopting the general bylaw. And we won't have a, we wouldn't have a period where there is no bylaw on this topic in town. Would anybody like to second that? Janet, I see your hand. Should I take that as your second?
S, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Johanna, you'll get another one. Okay. No further ado. We'll start at the end of the alphabet, which would be Johanna.
Hi.
Thank you, and Janet.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Maria. And I'm an I as well. So that's six in favor, no opposed, one member absent. Thank you all. All right, so we'll move on to item four in the agenda, I believe it is. Yes.
I'm Doug.
Yes, Janet.
I was hoping to make a motion to recommend the ver, the version, the draft version of preservation of historically significant buildings that the planning board would recommend adoption of this version to the town council before we move on.
Okay.
I don't have a date on this, though, so I'm wondering if I'd be a little more specific.
Well, you could say the version that was part of the planning board packet on May 18th.
Okay, so I will say that, so.
Does anyone want to second that? Maria, I saw your hand next.
I just have a question for Janet. Why, why are you bringing this up? I don't understand why this motion is happening.
Oh, because we've been reviewing it over and over again, and I think it's a really strong version. I think it encompasses a lot of concerns that everyone's raised, and I, I think the board, you know, we're kind of letting go of our bylaw. And I, I think it'd be great for the board to recommend this, this draft. I think it's been six years in the making when, according to Jane Wald.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Maria, did you have any further questions?
Yeah, is that the standard thing that we usually do, Chris, or I just, I've never, like, is that necessary?
Chris?
It's really offering your comments to the town council on this matter. So we haven't been through this very many times where we take something out of the zoning bylaw and put it into the general bylaw. But I, I think it would be, it would be appropriate, although not required for you to do this. You're required to vote on the rescission. You're not required to vote on the new bylaw, but you're offering your support for the new bylaw. I would say that's what you would be doing if you voted for this motion.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So we have a motion from Janet. Did anybody, Andrew?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any, any discussion from board members? Not seeing any. All right, oh, Johanna.
I was just gonna say, I don't have a problem with it. It feels a little, I don't know, there's part of me that feels like it's a little bit redundant, given the motion that we just passed, but, you know, no harm, no foul.
Okay, thanks, Johanna. I, I will say I'm gonna abstain. I, I think this is an unnecessary act on our part, and it's not, you know, it's, it's really kind of irrelevant to the town adopting it. Janet?
Um, so I think, you know, part of the reasons for it is that, you know, we've all worked on it and looked at it, and I think most of us support it. I also, I'm just very cognizant that Jane Walt had said they'd been working on this for six years, and I thought if we can give a little heft to it and help it get through the town council and support the work of the Historic Commission, they've just worked really hard on it. It's a good draft, and it, you know, it kind of incorporates a lot of people's different concerns, and also it just makes the whole process more clear to somebody who is a property owner, or somebody who's in a butter, or somebody in town hall, or the Historic Commission. So I think, you know, everything's less confusing. It's a stronger, more flexible thing. So, you know, I'd love to see us support that and help the Historic Commission.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, you said that the CRC had discussed both the rescission and the new amendment?
Yes, and the CRC voted to recommend the new amendment.
Okay. All right, Janet, I'll assume your hand is now a legacy hand. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call. And starting with Maria.
Abstain.
Tom.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
Janet.
Hi.
And Johanna.
Abstain.
And I will abstain also. So, Chris, we have three members voting in favor, three abstentions, and one absence.
Thank you.
Sure. Chris, since we did not achieve four, am I correct that the motion failed? Or, or is, we had three out of six? A 50%? A fifty percent result.
I think that's the case. I think we used it as the case.
Alright. Alright, thank you. So I don't see anything else on that particular topic. Could we have a motion? Do we need to close the hearing?
That's a good idea, yes.
Okay. And having, having gotten to this, Chris, I'm gonna ask another question, which I'm I'm a little embarrassed to ask. We got, we went all the way through that in a public hearing, and we did not ask for public comment.
Oh.
And.
You can reopen the public hearing. It's the same night. And you're the same group, and you're doing it in the same meeting, so I think you can reopen the public meeting, hearing.
Well, we ha- we haven't closed the hearing, but we've had the vote.
Right.
So.
That's true, yeah.
Well, I think before we close the hearing.
But I think you should, right, so before you close the public hearing, you should ask for public comment.
Right. And so, members of the public, my apologies. Does anyone want to comment on this rescission of Article thirteen of the bylaw? I see one hand from Jennifer Tao. We could bring her over and, once again, name and address.
No, can you hear me? I can't tell if I'm.
We can hear you, Janet.
I'm muted. Okay. So I'm Jennifer Tao at two fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue. I guess it's a little late. You know, I'm, I'm speaking as a resident, but I'm also on the CRC. And. I, you know, would have, I I think a vote in favor of that motion, you know, might have just been. Helpful to the council in ensuring that. That stronger bylaw would be the one that prevailed. So I know I'm a little late, but I would have spoken in support. Before the vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. I don't see any other hands from the public. Tom, I see your hand. You are muted.
Good, I was gonna move to close the hearing.
Okay. Well, Chris, we've now had. Public, we've had an opportunity for public comment and a little bit of public comment. Do you think it's appropriate that we go ahead and close the hearing?
I think so. I don't see anyone else's hands, hand up in the attendees.
Alright. Uh, I I think before I do that, board members, having heard the public comment. Would any of you want to change your vote? Uh, not seeing anyone. Who is saying they would want to change their vote. So in that case, I'm not gonna try to get into doing a revote. And would anyone like, sounded like Tom, you wanted to close the public hearing?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you, Tom, and Maria.
Excellent.
Thank you, Maria. If we could have a vote to close the public hearing, we'll start with Johanna.
Approved.
Alright, thank you. Janet?
Sure, approved.
Uh, Andrew?
Hi.
And Tom?
Hi.
Maria? And I'm an approve as well. Alright, so that passed six in favor. Okay, so the time now is seven oh six. And we'll move on to the next public hearing on the agenda this evening. Alright, so this is a site plan review. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A. This public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted. And is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding. SPR twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, UMass Five College Credit Union. Three ninety-eight to four oh six Northampton Road. Request Site Plan Review Approval under Sections three point three five eight point zero. And five point zero four three one. And eight point five of the zoning bylaw. To redevelop three ninety-eight and four oh six Northampton Road. Into a credit union branch, including drive-through facilities. The project includes thirty-four public, or thirty-four parking spaces, bicycle racks, wall signs, landscaping. And an oversized monument sign. The parcels are map thirteen D, Parcels forty-seven and forty-eight in the BL zoning district. Is there any board member disclosure concerning this project? Andrew?
Yeah, uh, my wife works for the credit union and and she. She had shared information with the, this as the news is starting to become public, but that's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other disclosures? Johanna?
I'm a member of the credit union. I don't think that gives me any material influence, so I don't think I need to abstain from anything, given the ethics laws, but just wanted to put it out there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a member as well.
Okay, Tom?
Don't mind.
Andrew? We've almost got a quorum here. Okay. Chris, do you want to introduce this, or should we move right on to Mr. Reedy and the design team? Uh, you are muted.
Sorry. Yes, move on to the applicant, and Nate is the person to go to with questions on this, because he's more familiar with it than I am.
Okay. Alright. Alright, Mr. Reedy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of UMass Five College Federal Credit Union. In a very exciting application for the redevelopment of a couple of parcels, as the chairman noted. Three ninety-eight and four oh six Northampton Road here in Amherst, zoned, limited business. And so needing site plan review approval from the board, hopefully this evening. Excited to introduce the development team. So we've got Alan Tierney from Kew Riddle Architects, the architect for the project. We've got Chris Chamberlain and Rachel Loffler from. Berkshire Design. Who are the engineer and landscape architect for the, for the project. I guess a little bit of background, and I'll share my screen just to orient everyone to to the sites. And I know that the board, or at least some members of the board, had a site walk, I believe it was Monday. UMass Five is very excited about this project being cited properly on Route nine, Northampton Road. I think you'll see a lot of sustainable aspects, you know. Porous pavement, rain gardens, a lot of landscaping. I think you'll see a wonderful building design. From Kew Riddle. And we have started the process with the Conservation Commission, as I think Ms. Brestrop circulated to the board. Uh, that we had started the process. The commission did close the hearing. They're working on their. Conditions for the Order of Conditions, and we expect to get that Order of Conditions issued, I believe it's May twenty-second. Uh, we've also submitted, because the site has two Morton buildings, and then a single-family dwelling on it. The single-family dwelling. Is of an age that requires a historical commission approval for its demolition. And so that application had been submitted to the Historical Commission. We were on for hearing this evening. But we asked to continue the Historical Commission hearing so that we could be here with you this evening. So what I'll do, just somewhat quickly to orient everyone. Is share my screen. You'll see the Amherst GIS. Map, you've got the parcels, so this is where the Morton buildings are. Route nine, moving in a southwest to northeast direction. You've got the. Yep.
Uh, we can't see. As you have staring the screen, at least on my screen, it hasn't come up yet. Okay.
Oh, I had seen.
I saw, I saw the screenshot.
Oh, did you?
I saw it too.
Okay, maybe it's just me. Go ahead again.
Sure, I'll.
I have, I have the drawings in front of me, so. Don't need to see it.
Yeah, and we'll, and this is, this is more for just general background. Just to give folks a sense of context for the sites that we're dealing with. This is just your Amherst GIS. Aerial, you've got Hawkins Meadow to the east, Green Leaves Drive to the west. The new Aspen Development, a little further west. The town line is this line. Right here, you know, moving further east, you've got, this is where that One University Drive South Development is, Ginger Garden on the corner. Gas station vacuums across the street. And then Johnny's roadside diner. You've got, I think, liquor store, pet store, grocery store. Maybe a Marshall's. I haven't been there in a while. And so then here, I just wanted to show you the the Google Street View, just to give you a sense. This is that single-family home that we're talking about, going through the demolition process with the Historical Commission. And here is the Zablit Motor Works' current operation. And then as you pan, there's fencing that's, I believe, owned by Hawkins Meadow. And then you've got a row of Arborvities. At about their maturity of about fifteen feet. And then you've got, you know, if I was able to move a little bit further here. Additional Arborvities in this jog, and these will actually get to be about sixty feet in height, so they're they're green giant Arborvities, so. As I'm sure Rachel will talk about a little bit later with site screening, from a landscaping perspective. You know, we believe that the the proposal with the downcast lighting. And the sighting of the building will will prevent any light trespass. Um, and then if you see, as you probably saw on the site visit, there's existing vegetation to the, to the rear, and then also. To the west. So this is a nice spot, a little bit on an island. We've, we're fortunate to have existing vegetation already. On that easterly side. I'll bring it back here once more and just turn around and show you. You know, where this, where this is and how it's already screened from Hawkins Meadow. Give you perspective of what's around it, commercial. Uh, to the northeast. And then we've got commercial right across the street. You can see the size of the signs. In the general area here, right up along Route nine, and then, as you know, Route nine is a divided highway. With lanes in each direction. So, you know, with that, I'll I'll be back to to kind of talk to you about. Use, operation, traffic, a little bit, but I think. Probably makes sense for us to turn it over to Rachel to dive into the site plan, and so I'll stop sharing my screen, and I'll let Rachel. Walk you through the site.
Thanks, Tom. Rachel, welcome.
Thanks. Can everyone see my screen? Yeah. I'm here, I'm joined, my name's Rachel Loffler. I'm with Berkshire Design Group out of Northampton, and I'm joined here. I'm a principal there, and I'm joined here with Christopher Chamberlain, also a fellow principal in the office. Um, and we're, we've been working together with KRA Architects, who will also be speaking tonight about about the building. Um, and with a wider team of an arborist and. A signage consultant and a lighting consultant. So this is a, an image of what we envision the project looking like from Route nine. A new building along Route nine, set setback from, from the road. And I'm gonna talk you through what that, how that fits on the site. When we started thinking about placing, placing the building on the site, we started thinking about, at what point along Route nine could you see the. See the building and know to turn in, and we really, we really got into. Site distances, its travel speeds, and what that, at what point along the line would you see? So, this is a, this is our site that we're talking about today. This is the garage portion and the residential portion of the site. This is Route nine, University Drive, the Green Leaves Development back here. Um, and there's existing stand-up vegetation along this corner, blocking views of the site. So around forty-five.
I'm sorry, Rachel. Andrew, I see your hand. Is this an urgent question, or?
I was just gonna ask if you could zoom in a little bit more on. Yeah, that's all, thanks. I don't need to go that much, but just so we can, there's no dead space, yeah, thanks.
So, a car traveling forty-five miles an hour along Route nine has about a sixty-degree cone of vision. Um, and so as you're coming along Route nine, we don't anticipate actually starting to see. And recognize that it is a bank that you can turn into until you've, until you've gotten about midway down, midway into the site. So that really informed our placement of the building and our entry and exit onto the site. So this is a survey showing the existing conditions as they exist today. This is again Route nine. This is the garage building and the residential building. Today, there's an existing curb-cut driveway for the residential building. And existing curb cut into the garage that's right up against the property line. And as. Tom mentioned, there are Arborvitie, which screen the site from its adjacent neighbors. In addition, there are about two hundred square feet of wetlands on the back portion of the property. And a significant portion of about thirty percent of the property is within the hundred-foot wetland buffer. The project did go before the Conservation Commission last Wednesday, and and we closed the public hearing, and next. At the next meeting, they're going to grant, grant orders of conditions. In addition, there are some mature trees along. The west side of the property, and our arborist has walked the site and tagged them individually and given us advice as to which trees may. Need to come down, which trees may need to be root spayed, aerospated, which trees may need to be trimmed. We also met with the neighbor, the Leaves neighbor, and walked the site with them, as some of these trees are on their property. And talked to what we would be doing.
And Rachel, I noticed that the Arborvitie are not on your property. At least, that's the way it looks on the LC one hundred.
I think some of their branches come over a little bit, yeah.
So. As long as that adjacent owner decides to leave them, they'll be effective as screening.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Also existing on site, in two thousand thirteen, the the owner put in a subsurface infiltration system. Which outfalls into, into the area out back. There's an additional stormwater collection system. That actually connects to the mass DOT system, so when, as we're looking at the site, we're thinking about. How to balance those two points of release. The demo plan, the, so this is the demolition and erosion and sedimentation control plan, shows the limit of work during construction that we anticipate. We anticipate fencing off the site, having a tracking pad, having a gate, a lockable gate. Putting down erosion control barriers around the property to prevent sediment from running off. And then we've detailed each tree, which tree may be removed, or which tree may be aerospated. The Conservation Commission requested, and these are some of the changes that they requested we add. To clarify that invasive species removal on site will be performed by a certified remover. Um, and that they prefer a method of cutting and dabbing rather than foley or spray. So to help orient you, the proposed project and how that relates to the new, new work, in red is that survey information that you just saw. Nine area, the existing drive into, into the garage parking service. Existing residents and their existing driveway. This black line, thick black line is the new footprint of the bank, and as you can see, it's located right in between all these different buildings. In addition, instead of coming into the site and having to turn in, right when you, right when you enter the site and moving. Moving around, around this way. We, we decided that, given the sightlines and the access, that it made sense to actually. Place the entry point into the site at the furthest eastern portion of the site, so that as people are driving down Route nine, the divided highway. Be coming this way, they would have a chance to see, see the sign, see the. They would have a chance to see, see the sign, see the building, and then turn into our project. And the project proposes. One-way travel around, around the site. So as you come into the site, um, there are, there are twenty-five parking spaces that are for visitors. Uh, to which are ADA with a fully accessible direct access to the front door. Uh, you loop around, there are three ITMs, those are interactive teller machines. That during the day, someone has a video interface with you as you pull up, and then after hours, you can use as a standard ATM. There's a drive, a drive-through lane to bypass all that. And that continues, and you can continue on out with a right turn only onto Route Nine. There are, uh, nine additional parking spaces which are anticipated for staff. With an accessible parking space for the staff only. In the front of the site, we are, we're, we are, um. Devoting a large portion of the area for rain garden for LED stormwater infiltration. Um, is also using it as a way to showcase UMass Five's commitment to sustainability and environmental stewardship. Um, and all the asphalt on site is. Is forest paving, so instead of having to have a subsurface infiltration system or a large basin. We're actually handling all the stormwater within the profile of the paving, which we're pretty excited about. I should also say that we are, there's an existing bus stop here on the corner, right on the property line. Um, which is used quite a bit. Every time we've been there, we've seen people standing waiting. And we're proposing to move the bus stop further down past that entry drive to actually help eliminate, um, vehicular conflicts. And allow people coming, passing by to have time to let the bus know they need to stop and make the stop here. So this is about thirty-eight feet from the intersection, the drive, to allow a bus length to stop. Util. Utilities wise, um, we have, it's a great site to develop. There's a lot of municipal utilities really close right up in the road. Um, we'll definitely be, after this process, be going to the MAST DOT to get the, um. Highway access permit for the curb cuts and then a utility access permit for connections to water, sewer, and electric in the right of way. Um, but there is a water main along, along North Hampton Road. We did a fire flow test for it, and we have sufficient water press, pressure for the project. We're proposing a six-inch water line that connects to the back, to the mechanical room, and we have a separate. A separate stub for fire-water suppression system and a potable water system. Um, we're putting in a new sewer line connection. We actually investigated the sewer line, existing sewer line on site. Um, that, that is in a different location, but it, it. It was not, it was clay and it was not in good condition, so we decided to go ahead and, and provide a new, um, sewer line connection. And then. Um, any of the stormwater, stormwater from the roof is collected. Is split into, it goes, some of it goes to the front rain garden and some of it goes into the back level spreader area. The areas that are, um, any overflow or just the overflow for the rain garden in the front. Uh, we will reuse the existing connection to the MAST DOT to handle that. Um, and an extensive stormwater report has been prepared for this project, and Chris can speak to that more if you have questions, but we are. Reducing, we're improving the site significantly. We're reducing both the velocity and the volume water leaving the site on this location and this location from where it is today. Uh, during initial review with the fire department, they suggested that they would like to have another fire hydrant. Um, for access, if there were in case of emergency, um, and so we've been working with Chris Bascom back and forth, and. This is the location that he's comfortable with, and we're comfortable with placing of the fire hydrant for his access for trucks. Then this is, a diagram is showing the movement of the largest Amherst fire truck coming into the site. Making that turn, moving through the turnaround, and then exiting the site. Planting wise, we're super excited, um, to be able to work with UMass Five and develop. A wonderful planting plan that features natives and works with rain gardens and provides habitat for pollinators. So we have a mix of different, different types of plant mixes. Some that are, um, pollinators for sun, some that are pollinators for shade. We have a, a rain garden planting with a lot of carrots, sedgees, and carrots, and sunflowers. And then we have some areas of ferns and birches and screening trees of balsam for some good natives in the back. During our site visit with the neighbors at Green Leaves, they, um, they really like the image of their sign with green vegetation behind it. Um, and they, they asked if we would be willing to consider adding worse screening trees along this property line. And, um, our client is thrilled to help, uh, to, to accommodate them, but we would like to take some time to review that. Those species options with both our client and Green Leaves, um, before finalizing that. Lighting, we, we heard comments from you, it was very hard to read the lighting plan, so we have. Two options here for each of them. Um, we've taken, pass it. The lighting plan provided by our, our lighting designer, um, having color coding, what, what. What, what image goes where. Um, we also have. An illustrative rendering of the photometrics where the lighter, the lighter color yellow is the less dense light, and then the darker yellow is the more intense light. So the lighting strategy on site is to use a range of different fixtures for, to bright, drive safety, um, and security for the bank. We're using a mixture of pole, pole-mounted sightlights around the perimeter of the parking lot. We have some shallow downlights that are in recessed in the canopy of the building. Uh, we have a couple of wall lights that are in the ocean stone walls. And several baller sightlights along pedestrian pathways where, where the lighting levels were low enough that we needed a little bit more support. And then there are some additional, uh, wall mounted. Some additional lights at the building, um, to enhance the arrival experience. So on the plan, the red dots are all the pole-mounted lights. When you end towards the parking lot. So this, in arrival day of parking, is, is illuminated by the pole-mounted lights. As well as this visitor's area. Um, and there are a couple more pole-mounted lights along the periphery. At the front of the building, along the. Sidewalks along the front, um, the purple colored lights are all baller lights. Illuminating the pathways. So that's the same for both this entry. And this entry over here. Um, and then the magenta colored lights are the, the wall lights that are inside the ocean stone walls. I forgot to mention that, uh. We do have some curved ocean stone seat walls. That, um, create outdoor seating areas at the front entry, so that'll be a really nice cascade effect. All the lights are dark sky compliant and shielded. Um, shielded from overhead. And then on the second floor. Uh, there is a, there is a deck space over top ITMs, it's both a canopy to protect the ITMs, but also an. Overflow space, which Alan will talk a lot, a little bit more of the building plans. And that area also has illumination with, um. With a couple, with a lot of these, these magenta lights are, um, lights recessed in, in the railing, so it's very subtle dots of light. Um, and then there are some additional lights right at the edge of the building. We also got, um, a question about the dumpsters, and we have been working with USA Recycles. To accommodate the, the dumpster movements, and just last week, so our original design is based upon. Um, is based upon a rear-loading dumpster truck, which USA Recycles does have in its fleet currently. Um, but just last week, they informed us that they actually would love to discontinue that truck, and they'd like us to, they'd like to go to a front-loading truck on all new projects. So we have. We have looked at a possibility of taking, flipping that dumpster enclosure. At ninety degrees so that a dumpster, front-loading dumpster truck can come in. The main entry, move around, pick up the, pick up the dumpster, and then continue on its way. Um, so I'd like to reiterate, this is, the project is a. One point four acre site, um, we, we meet the, we comply with the lot coverage and, um, setback requirements. It's a two-story building, we're promoting four bike racks, thirty-four bike spaces. We have three D eight, three eighty-eight spaces and a, and a new bus stop location.
All right, thanks, Rachel. Um, I guess the. I, I guess I'd like to know, uh, would you guys like to move on into the architectural drawings now, or should we? Take questions on the site drawings and talk that through first?
Is, as far as we're concerned, whatever, whatever the board wants, it might be good to go through architectural in case. Elon mentioned something that might, uh, answer a question about the site, or, or she, she'll probably talk about the site a little bit, so it might be better to. Go through it and then come back and talk about site architecture, and then we can talk about, um, traffic signage and the use, if that's okay.
Okay, then, Elon, you're on.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thanks so much. Uh, my name is Elon Tierney, I'm president at Keen Riddle Architects, located right here in downtown Amherst. Um, I'm really excited to share this potential project, uh, for the UMass Five College Credit Union. As Rachel mentioned, Keen Riddle and Berkshire Design Group have been working with UMass Five for a couple of years. Um, to find a more prominent and visible location, uh, along Route Nine for their flagship branch. And this is a really great location for them. Um, in addition to the increased visibility, some of the primary goals, uh, that are driving this design are sustainability. Um, creating a welcoming place for members, visitors, and staff. Um, and a building and site design that represents the UMass Five mission, uh, its vision and its principles. So just a reminder, the architectural design is still in schematic design. Um, while the site design is closer to, uh, construction-ready. Um, so just keep that in mind, we are not a hundred percent done with our, our design. So this is the, um, the main image that we've been sharing with you. No, it's not, here we go, okay. So as Rachel mentioned, uh, visibility is really important, and so we looked at it, uh, how people would be able to see. The building going in both directions on Route Nine, and this image is when you're pulling out of University Drive onto Route Nine, it's highly visible, which is really great. Um, considering it is UMass. Um, even though it's five college, it starts off with UMass, so all the folks coming from UMass will see this flagship branch, um, as they come onto Route Nine. On the other hand, as you're coming from the west, um, or from Hadley going towards Amherst Center. Um, as Rachel said, there's a lot of plantings right on that corner, and so visibility of the building is difficult, and, um. What we've done to try to make it visible is bring the monument sign closer to the sidewalk and the road. Um, so it is highly visible, uh, people are traveling at a higher rate of speed, and as Rachel said, it is one of the reasons why we decided to put the entrance. Um, on the far side of the site, so people have time to see it. And make a turn into the, the property. As you turn into the driveway, this is the, uh, image that you will see. Um, the front of the building faces north, and then the side is east facing. We've got a really nice glassy corner that shows the vertical circulation or the main stair of the building. The, uh, pergola on the front, the wooden pergola is meant to draw people in, and it's also representative of the. Um, timber structure that we hope to use inside the building. Um. We are hoping to have a robust envelope. Uh, with energy-efficient systems, low-flow water fixtures, healthy materials that have a low carbon footprint. And an ultimate goal of a net-zero energy building. Not a hundred percent designed yet, but those are our goals. Um, we haven't selected all the materials yet, but, uh, we are looking at a composite. Siding material and energy-efficient windows that look substantially like what you're seeing here. At the front of the building, you, this is showing the, um, signage that's on the building, the large sign at the top of the building. The letters will glow at night, um, when it gets dark out. And then there's also the mission statement sign that's right near the door, and there will be a, um, wall washer light that's in the. Ceiling that washes light across that mission statement sign. Um, as Rachel said, all of the fixtures are pointed downwards, dark sky compliant. Um, the light fixtures in the front here are tucked up in between the beams, in these three beams. Underneath the roof area and headlight down onto the walkways. So this building is ideally situated and, um, oriented for solar exposure. We've got this little butterfly roof and that southern-facing roof we hope to, uh, cover with PV, um. And get to that net zero goal. Uh, we did keep the form of the building intentionally simple, both for energy efficiency and, uh. Cost-effectiveness. As you come around to the back of the building, you can see those, um, IPMs. You can drive in underneath to the three IPMs that are below, and as Rachel mentioned, we're showing a roof deck, roof deck over those ITMs. That is spilling out from the main conference room. It's meant to be used by staff for, uh. Lunch or meetings, or when there are occasional, um, networking events. Uh, they may have people out on that, those, that deck, but it would be limited, um, mostly during date hours, mostly for staff. Um, and a couple times a year would guests be invited to use that deck. Um, and then as you leave the site on the west side of the building, as Rachel was saying, there's some really nice birch trees. On the staff entrance is tucked in the back, uh, corner here, um. So private and secure. And I'll bring you inside on the floor plans. So the front of the building, Route Nine, can you see my cursor? Can you see my cursor? Um, this is that pergola that's out front. There's a vestibule with two ITMs as you come in, and that vestibule will be, uh. Open for use of the ITMs or ATMs, uh, twenty-four seven, but this door obviously locked into the main bank area. As you come in, there's a, uh, concierge desk or a greeter's desk. And then walking through into an open lobby space, which has an open, um, area up to the second floor above. There are offices that are ringing that area. It's very similar to what their, um, current branch is like at Westgate. Um, and at the back, there are two teller pods, as well as a, a booth, a private booth teller station. Um, and safe deposit, uh, public bathrooms, and then, uh. The private secure, uh, areas for staff. There's a back stair, this is the staff entry. Um, it is used as, also as an emergency egress, and, um, as Rachel noted, it is an accessible entry and egress. Um, and there is a accessible parking space for a staff person at that location. The second floor is primarily for staff or for appointment-only, um, engagement with members. Uh, someone would come up the stairs and land at this landing, which can be used as a waiting area or an in. Someone would come up the stairs and land at this landing, which can be used as a waiting area or an informal. Meeting space. And there's also an elevator from the first floor. Just as you come in the entry, it opens out onto both sides. This is a loop around that open area down to the first floor. Again, offices on either side. The back has the large conference or community room that spills out onto that roof deck. There's a big break room, a couple of bathrooms, and again, that back stair, of course, a janitor's closet. This is a section through the building, just kind of giving you an idea of that relationship between the first floor. So all the way over to the right is that vestibule where the ITMs are. You come into that. Greeter space, the greeters here, that's the elevator tower upstairs is that informal meeting or waiting space. This is the mezzanine sort of wrapping around the first floor, the offices at the back. This is the teller station in the back. The teller pods and then the community room and filling out onto that deck with the ITMs below. This is an image of what it's like to walk in. You'd meet the greeter. You'd see the teller pods beyond the offices. To your left would be that open stair with some plantings, another informal waiting space. As you walk through that open waiting space, you can see up to the second floor, to the community room and the offices above. And to the teller pods in front of you. Displays of art and community artwork is important. And so there are places where we've identified to share that. In the waiting areas. And then as you're leaving or turning around to leave the building, looking back towards the front. That's the vestibule at the very end, a large glassy area to the front, the elevator tower. Above and you can see in this image, some of that exposed wood structure that we're proposing. As you come up to the stairs on the second floor level, this is looking back towards the conference room and you can see down to the first floor level. And here's that conference room and you can see the roof deck beyond. And then looking back from the conference room towards the front of the building. Now I turn it back to Tom. Do you want me to leave this up or you want me to take this down?
Yeah, I I think that's great. Thanks very much, Elon. Mr. Chair, if you want to talk site or architecture, now would probably be a good time for us to to chat.
Okay. Why don't we bring the site drawings back up? I don't know if that's Rachel.
Yes.
So board members. I guess prepare your questions or comments if you have any. Andrew.
Thanks Doug. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, so a couple of quick site ones. I did not go to the visit.
Actually, good point. Why do we do the site the site visit report first?
Sure.
And I know there were two or three members of our board that were there. Who would like to make that report? Johanna.
I always get nervous doing this, but I can take a crack at it. So we met Rachel and. One other representative at the site. We started near the green sleeves corner and then walked around the garage and the warehouse to the back. And. You know, looked at essentially where the gravel part drops off and then there's kind of a. Lower vegetated area. We poked around the back of the warehouse and looked at the residence that's there that. Will be before the historic commission in June. And then we looped back around to the front and talked a lot about the entrance and egress and the rain garden. It was very helpful to see the site. At one point, we had a brief visit with the owner of the garage. Who's going to be moving his business to the Fort Hill Auto Body Shop on Route nine on the south side of. Or sorry, the east side of Amherst College. I think that's it. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
All right. Thanks, Johanna. Janet, would you like to add?
Sure. It it things I think we talked about were the permeable pavement, which was exciting for at least me. I'm sure everybody else. That the the pavement, you know, will take the rainwater. The site is not, you know, sitting like a foot. Above the groundwater, so that's possible. And then also we, it was really noisy in the front, like where those people are standing and sitting. From traffic, but particularly from the car wash, it was just sort of incessantly noisy. When you go to the back of the building, it's really quiet and. The arborvitae are like a complete screen. You could not even see the apartments next door. It I think Rachel noted that the roof garden, they're they're building the deck strong enough so they could do like a green garden on there at some point. And I think that's about it. For me to add.
All right.
Tom?
Yeah, no, that was about it. Yeah. I mean, we we talked a little bit about the house. That is on the site, the residence and its current state and what. How it will be up for review by the historic board, but. There was some commentary about that as well.
All right. Very good. Andrew, why don't we come back to you? Next site questions?
Okay, yeah, um, the first, so just seeing how you've sort of reversed the 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 entry point and the egress. I was just wondering, and I understand the logic behind it. Is is does the amount of vegetation impact your sight lines from the egress? I couldn't tell. Yeah. Okay, sorry.
There will be some some trimming that takes place. So one of the things that the arborists identified. Zoom in really close here. There are three trees that are growing together as one dense mass. One is a hickory. I think one. One was a Norway maple. And he recommended that we actually take them down. And the neighbors were okay, okay with that also. We're going to keep one of the three trees in the stand. And then prune this up so that as you are leaving the site. At the exit. And you're queuing up here. So sorry. As your car queues up here, you have those trees are back back at this location. So with with that removal and the pruning, we're going to open up really good sightlines for people that are leaving the exit area.
Provided also you can move the bus. Is it a bus shelter?
No, it's it's just a.
It's just a sign.
Yeah, and the existing sidewalk is the tumulus and there's a little concrete pad. Where the P V T A bus stop is now, and we will be providing a shelter, a covered shelter in this area.
Okay. A couple other just quick ones is. What's the snow removal plan?
We had provided. It provided this plan with this mission package. First, I will say that what we've seen with and with porous asphalt is that. The snow removal and winter management is is a lot easier. Just because the sheer fact that the water permeates into the lower layers. And so you have much less standing water on the surface of the pavement. So what we are anticipating is a reduction in the amount of salt that's needed for the site as well as the amount of plowing that's needed. But we will need to plow on those heavier snow events. We do have some areas where snow may be stored. But we also got comment from the Conservation Commission that they they do not want snow stockpiled in these areas. So UMass Five will be working, working to manage the site to keep to keep it clear and open, to keep the drives open. And that may be, you know, looking at if there are spaces that are not being used for parking, then maybe that's where snow gets stockpiled. And as a last resort, removing snow in the site if they need to.
Okay, yeah, that so that I should tie it in with my first one is just that. On the western edge of the property that that if that is a spot where you're putting snow, that that also seems like it would impact the sightlines. So if that if if the plan is to not use that, that seems reasonable, but I I would certainly not. Want to see a snowbank on the top of the page. Yeah, that's true. They're right. And having never drunk driven a plow, I I don't know how how you get to to snow out of that. The and then the other question, I know you'd mentioned it was a last minute change, but just the dumpster configuration, if you opposed it. It looked like the corral was kind of hanging in the. And I couldn't quite make this out. It's like the corral door sort of hanging in the roadway there. It looks like maybe it's fourteen feet. I'm just wondering if you're swinging through, coming out of one of the lanes. Whether you might clip that dumpster. Given that it's it's kind of a ninety degree turn.
Yeah. I think we have about fifteen feet clear that there the shorter. The shorter gates. I mean, we we can submit another diagram that shows traffic through. If that would be helpful.
I I'd be curious. Yeah, I mean, also just, I mean aesthetically too, not that that's a huge concern here for me, but. You know, your as your passengers are queued up to go, they're going to be staring right at that dumpster. So imagine you want to. Do something to make it look kind of nice is which is going to add maybe some additional bulk to it, so.
Yeah, we're we're proposing a six foot high cedar enclosure around around the dumpster. So they'll be looking at that.
Okay, thanks, Rachel. That's it for me on this part, Doug. Thanks.
Sure, Andrew. Anybody else? Janet.
So um, I I have to say, I was really impressed with the thoughtfulness of this design and the sustainability features. And I just wanted to put in a pitch for the porous. Surface because when we asked, it was only twenty percent more, but you save money over the like fifty year life cycle. So I just hope everybody does that. One my I think my biggest criticism or hope for change is the seating area. It was just inconceivable to me that people would really be sitting there, given the amount of noise from the. Street from Route nine and sort of unattractive view of Route nine and then the loudness of. Would seem like maybe a twenty four hour operation of people vacuuming their cars. And so I I was thinking, I I appreciate that you've made this beautiful rain garden. You're trying to draw people in. I thought that replacing some of the benches maybe with some native shrubs and flowering shrubs would have that really pleasing entryway. People would even be from the street would see these, you know, medium sized shrubs and their eyes would be drawn toward or you'd just be very happy when you walked in. I just thought the seating area was like a great idea that no one's going to use. It might just kind of look odd or be odd. And so that was my probably my biggest. Issue with the the design. I do have one quick question about the colors. It it sounds like it's native woods and gray. Is that stone a stone? Look, because my my packet made everything look sort of. Kind of purply gray and pink. And so I just wondered if the colors are what we're looking at, or are they going to be different?
The colors of the building are intended to have sort of a a cool gray color. The sign is the UMass five. Purple color. And then sort of the wood tones would be also that warm wood tone color. So it's a a mix of cool and warm colors. Like I said, we haven't selected the materials yet. They'll probably be composite siding, not necessarily wood siding.
All right. Thank you, Janet. Maria.
Thanks, everyone, for the presentation. It's exciting to get improvements on our sort of entry into Amherst. I'd love that for a whole quarter to get. Cleaned up a little. So this is a great project. It's definitely doing it. So I'll keep my comments to site. I guess that's. Where we're we're focusing on now. If you go back to the site plan. Any one of them really is fine of your proposed. Project. Okay, so I don't know, are the hours nine to five as far as the access to the what you keep calling the ITMs? The one three in the back. I'm just, yeah, those three, just because, you know, when they're sitting there, the headlights will be going. West and I know there are some existing trees there, so making sure that doesn't, you know, trespass. Because even though all your sight lighting is great and it's dark sky and it's pointing down shielded. We should be cognizant of, you know, the cars idling and bear lights. So I'm sure, you know, your landscape design has considered that, but just that. You know, it was hard to tell from the planting plan if all those trees would take care of that trespass. I think, yeah, that greenish one, I think maybe had some.
And I I'd like to, should I respond to your?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that on that east side, this is actually the a drive. So this is Green Leaves Drive, and then there's another island of vegetation beyond that, another layer of screen. So there's a lot of layers between. Lights and the cars pointing this way. And actually, it's one of the advantages of this plan is that by flipping. Flipping the entry and coming through here, we're not, we're not really directing a lot of headlights parking at the ITM. And then neighbors here. So there are many layers of protection that go beyond the site. So this is a wooded area. We do have two balsam fir along the side. And then we do have two sour wood trees, which are deciduous trees in that area. And then we will be adding not not directly up ITM. We won't be anymore here. Also, if we do rotate the dumpster, that will also be another layer of screening. Where the actual enclosure, both sides of that fencing and the dumpsters themselves will prevent the lights from the cars getting.
Right, sixty high. Sure. Okay, super. And then the other comment was the entry from Route nine. Is going through the visitor parking. And so, you know, how to slow those people down so that, you know, as people are crossing from the. The east side to the west to get to the front door, the people walking from their cars, that, you know, people zooming in from Route nine. Have a way that slows them down. I don't know if you have like a. A bump or something. Exactly. Yeah, there's a crosswalk that's painted, but you know, the people coming in Route nine are coming in at like. You know, what is that, like forty miles an hour? And they got to slow down really quickly and just making sure that that pedestrian and car intersection. Is mediated so that there's a safe way for the, what is that, like twelve parking spots for those people to get across to the front door. But otherwise.
Could I jump in for that for a minute? Because I it is. We have talked about potentially that low portion of parking being staff parking and that. The parking that's closest to the buildings being for. Members or guests so that, you know, when somebody's working there all day, that's where they park their car. So guests aren't necessarily having to cross as much. It's not, I don't, it won't, it won't be marked as such, but. We've definitely thought a lot about how to make it safe pedestrian wise.
Well, I like that a lot harder. Yeah, that's a great idea. Then the only other thing about site stuff. Yeah, I love like Janet said, the porous paving. I really thought about not just making it like, you know, durable and long lasting. But that's a real symbol for UMass about the commitment to, you know, greener initiatives. I think that's great, especially since it's such a, you know, prominent site that, you know, really makes a statement. So I think it's fantastic. But those are all my site comments. Should I hold off on architectural, Doug?
Yeah, why don't we do that for the moment?
Okay. Thank you.
Any any other? Andrew.
Thanks. Just one last one. How many employees are are expected to be here at any given time, just seeing the number of offices inside?
I believe it's about twelve full time employees, but so FTEs. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's, there might be. Eight actual full time employees and then eight that are half time employees, if that makes sense. So the offices up on the upper level are not used a hundred percent of the time. It is appointment by appointment.
Very good. Thanks.
All right. I had I had a few questions on mostly on on a site plan. I'm looking at L C one one one, if you wanted to turn to that. And some of these questions are not really specific to that drawing. First of all, there's a sort of dark rectangle in the lower left corner. What is that?
Yeah, that is, that is a level spreader.
Okay. What, what is that? I saw that term on another sheet.
Let me pull up a detail for you. Um, it shows you what, what that looks like. So it is a, it is a way, it's where the, all those, any extra stormwater that has, that has gathered in the subsurface, in the forest paving or any of the roof water that's excess, that's coming, being released gently back into the wetland area. Um, and it's a way that we manage the flow of water to make sure that there isn't erosion down slope of that pipe. So what happens is pipe, pipe out falls into this level, level lip spreader, level spreader. It's basically a, well, a, a long depression in the ground with reinforced with stone and allows the water to, to fill in this area and then the excess water then sheet flow over, uh, over a curved line. So what it does is it distributes water coming from a pipe, which is really forced in one point and it spreads it out gently across, across the level lip of the spreader. Um, we've, we've used this on a lot of projects and it, and it works really well and it prevents erosion from the downstream areas.
Okay. And is the bottom of the swale, uh, does it percolate into the ground too?
It can. It's not, it's the, a, a functional level lip spreader doesn't necessarily need to infiltrate. It just needs to hold the water and allow, allow it to spill over the top, over the top of the spillway. A lot of times it does actually infiltrate as well as evaporate and spill over.
Okay. All right. Uh, so let's go back to a site plan. In the southeast corner of the building, there's a pad that has a T and a G. Is that a transformer and a generator?
Correct. Yeah. And these are also enclosed with a, with a screening fence.
Okay. Let's see. And then, um, you've talked a lot about the sustainable planting. Uh, but I did see on one, maybe on the planting plan that there is some lawn. I wondered if you could just clarify the extent of lawn, since I thi, I thought it would be great if this was so sustainable that you didn't need to bring lawn mowers in and you know, have those emissions from maintaining the site.
Yeah, we're, we're using, um, our lawn is actually a, an, a no mow lawn mix. So it looks, it looks akin to lawn. It requires mowing once a year in November after the seed heads appear. It takes a little bit longer to establish and it has to be cut at a higher rate, but it, it, it looks like lawn, but it, it's a much more sustainable alternative. It uses less water than regular lawn and it's well adapted to our area.
And how high does it grow?
It grows to eight, it grows to eighteen inches, but its main characteristic when it reaches that mature level is it flops over and it looks like little waves in, in the, in the grass.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, um, on, on the exiting and entrance off of Route nine, uh, having a car exiting at the same time, another car might be slowing down to enter. Is there any sort of conflict between those two vehicles that's imagined since one is sort of pulling out in front of the other, or is the traffic, you know, the, uh, density of traffic so small that it's not really an issue?
I, I would say that, um, the, the, the condition and I'm gonna answer it a different way, maybe not directly, but I could say that the condition has improved upon, upon what there exists today. And the fact that you know, we, we have only one, one point of exit from the site. There are two sites being combined into one. There's one point of exit instead of three points of exit as it exists today with the residence and then the two entries and exits for the garage. This distance here is very similar to what, what happens in multiple places along Route nine. So I can let Chris speak to that more, or, or Tom, or others on our team talk about this more also.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add that what's unusual is that, that, um, conflict, which I'll put in air quotes, exists within two driveways in the same site, but it's a condition that's repeated up and down Route nine. Any driveway you're exiting, you're exiting and heading toward the entry to a different property typically. Um, and then also, uh, to answer this question and, and sort of address a couple of the concerns earlier is to keep in mind that because this is a state highway, we will be going through the Mass DOT Highway Access Permit process, which includes demonstrating sufficient site distance and separation from other, uh, conflicting movements.
Okay. Great. Great. So then, uh, I just had a couple of comments. The first was that the bicycle location, uh, if you expect a lot of customers to come there, it might be nice if the bicycle location were covered, uh, and potentially closer to the entry. Then secondly, I noticed the sidewalk along Route nine is dimensioned at five feet. And I wondered whether that is a requirement of DOT or whether you could be the first to make this a more pedestrian friendly environment and widen it to maybe eight feet or something like that. It, is that dictated by DOT or?
Yeah, Chris, and I don't know if you wanna talk about that as part of, i- it looks to me like that's in the DOT right of way. And so that's gonna be under DOT. Yeah, it'll certainly be entirely their discretion. Um, I think that one issue with, for instance, an eight foot sidewalk here is that, um, either we'd be widening it toward the road and putting the edge of the sidewalk that much closer to the fast moving traffic. Or we'd be widening it into the site and then you've got a situation where DOT owns five feet of the sidewalk and we own three feet of it. And my suspicion is they would not necessarily like that. Um, but it's certainly, we have, we have multiple rounds of reviews with them. So it's, it's something that we could, uh, discuss, but uh, my strong suspicion is that they'll want to keep the, keep the standard and consistent with the width um, up and down until they themselves come through and, and change everything.
Okay. Uh, and then the third one was, uh, regarding the bus, the bus stop. Uh, do you expect that that will eventually be a pull off for the bus to get out of the traffic way? Uh, or is it gonna just stay where the bus is slowing down in, in the, in the travel lane?
So that's, I mean, totally up to PVTA. I, I think our expectation is that it remains just as it is and not a complete pull off.
So, uh, if it became a pull off, uh, would a pull off be long enough that it needed to extend into the adjacent property? Or is there enough room here with it? I, I don't know, you know, whether they care, whether they're you know, affecting two properties or one, but it looks like it's pretty narrow. You know, it's not a very long distance if you were gonna try to do it all within one property.
My sense is that they would have to extend it onto a second property. But it's likely, and Rachel, I don't know if you have an existing conditions plan to show where the existing bus concrete pad is. So that's where we're talking about right now, Mr. Chair. And so if they were gonna do a pull off there, given the proximity to the Green Leaves Drive, they're probably already looking at impacting two properties. Cause if they were to go back further, then you know, that's quite close to that Green Leaves Drive. So up to PVPA though.
All right. All right. I don't have any more questions. Um, maybe we should go on to the architectural drawings.
Would you like me to share my screen again?
Yes, please.
Can you see that?
Yep. All right, board members, any, any comments or questions about the architecture of the project? Maria?
Thanks, Dan. Um, I did not have time to read all hundred sixty-six pages. What are the hours of operation as far as employees coming to this building? Is it nine to five?
Nine, nine to five, Monday through Friday. And then I believe it's nine to noon on, or wine, one o'clock on Saturdays.
And then the ITM is twenty-four seven or no?
No, the ITM, so the ITM is where there's an actual teller that you can contact and they will be available till six PM. And then after six PM, it's just a regular ATM. But so an ATM is available twenty-four, seven through sixty-five.
Okay. So the lights, um, on the front will definitely be on all the time, but maybe not necessarily, or are all the lights gonna be on? Even after business?
The sight lighting will be on, um, you know, for safety and security because the, the ATMs or ITMs in the back will also be available. So all that, all, everything that's an ATM becomes an, and everything that's an ITM becomes an ATM after six PM, if that makes sense. So you can either drive through or you can park and go to the vestibule.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Um, okay. Sorry. That was kind of more of a site. I forgot to ask. Well, going back to my, for earlier thing about the, the whole symbol and I, I, I love this building. I, I hope it gets built and not value engineered too badly. Um, and I really appreciate all the, you know, um, putting solar and attempting to hit net zero and, um, oh, what, I wrote it down. Um, the only thing I would maybe suggest architecturally, not that planning were really, I don't know if we have pervy on it, but just that, um, on that south side where that really cool roof terrace is, uh, maybe there's more opportunity for more TVs if you provide shading, cause that's gonna be a really hot terrace, especially with their weather lately. Um, like I, I don't know that I would hang out, out there on that bright open uh, exposed space. So maybe there's more opportunity for, um, TVs, similar to the way you guys have shaded a lot of parking. And, um, not, not saying to cover the whole thing and, you know, um, those, those panels, but, um, but yeah, I really appreciate the sort of risk and the sort of looking forward sort of aspect of the architecture. I really, um, I think hopefully it will set a trend and help things sort of tie together better at that whole corner, um, with you guys already doing the other building closer to, um, University Tribe. I kinda agree with Janet that, you know, don't build something that no one's gonna to occupy. And so, you know, the pergola looks great. It really marks the front entry. And I wonder if there's a different way to animate the front, whether it's through planting instead of places where people might occupy or might not occupy. Um, so I guess, you know, that, that's a really good sort of comment about will people really use it? And, um, if I, if it were me, I probably would hang out on that roof terrace and have my lunch back there where it's more quiet and as long as it wasn't, you know, ninety-five degrees and, um, you're in complete sun. Um, so anyways, I, I, I really appreciate the building and the risks it's taking as far as just being really, um, modern. And, uh, I, I hope that, uh, yeah, it stays pretty close to the rendering. It looks fantastic. And, um, and I, yeah, I really like the, all the, uh, sort of uh, thought toward, um, you know, it's not I'm, e- even if it gets value engineered out, it, I can tell you, you know, your intentions are like, we're gonna keep pushing as much of it as we can, cause this is a statement for UMass. So, um, yeah, so really appreciate that. Um.
I think that's it. I think that's all I have for architecture.
Thank, thank you, Maria. Um, we have definitely thought about that southern exposure on that rooftop. And as Rachel may have mentioned, our hope, again, you mentioned value engineering. Um, our hope is that eventually we are designing it so that it can have plants and, and potentially even trees someday. To provide some of that shading, but the idea of maybe a, a solar pergola back there is also uh, an idea that we'll discuss with UMass.
All right. Thanks, Maria. Tom?
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you for the presentation. And I, uh, like Maria, I appreciate your building, um, quite a bit. And I like the, the double height space. I think it's a really, you know, well executed experience inside there. So, I applaud all of that. And I really do enjoy the, the back balcony as well as a private space. I'm going to have to agree with, with my colleagues about that front space, um, from the site visit. The whistling and howling of the site exposure to the car wash. It was really, really hard to even hear people talk. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way to kind of maybe, I mean, and I appreciate the values, right? This is about building community. This is, it's about sustainability. It's about all those things and showcased here. But I think, you know, if those seating areas are kind of pushed back more close to the building, um, along this kind of left side here, um, and then maybe there was some low shrubbery or something that could actually block some of that sound. Um, so that might feel a little bit more intimate and a little less exposed. I think people might actually sit there. You, you know, people who work there might go out there for a break. But I think right now it's so exposed and the noise pollution is so immense. That I, I think it's, it's not serving you very well that to use it for just seating when I think it could be wonderful opportunity for plantings and other things to really showcase the values of UMass five. Well, while finding maybe a potentially slightly more secluded spot or build some seclusion for that, um, particular seating area. So just my thoughts on that.
Thank, thanks, Tom. Um, that's, that is more site related, but I value what you all experienced there. And I think it's certainly something we would uh, review with UMass five. And Rachel, do you have any comments or thoughts about that?
I do say, I did, didn't really go into a lot of detail about the planting plan, but we, we do have a lot of shrubs, um, integrated in that arrival pathway experience. And we were playing, and I also didn't explain, we're playing with some of the grades along the side to get, create more closure on the, on the east side. So we are, we are trying to do what we can, um, to, to showcase plants and make it a really lovely experience, uh, along the way. And I think even if we do remove the seating area, having the Goshen stone walls as a reference to our area um, as a figure and a way to ground the building is really important visually. And, um, also to create that separation, clarify where the rain garden is and where the walking spaces are. So I, I do think that the design can still hold its own and achieve all that you guys are pointing out and talking about, even if it's not used for seating. I think it still works really well.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Johanna?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I wanna echo that I appreciate a lot of the sustainability elements of it, from the onsite solar to the really thoughtful stormwater and just water management plan, the impervious surfaces, the native plantings. Um, there's just a lot of really thoughtful work that goes into this. One question that arose for me as I was looking at the images was just, um, how much great daylighting there's gonna be in the building? And it made me wonder how you're planning on dealing with bird strikes on all these wonderful glass windows. Or if they're, you know, what kind of consideration or factors you're taking into account there?
Um, thank you for that. Uh, yes, we, well, on the east and west side, we have, um, solar fins on the windows. So, and the office areas, um, that'll cut down on glare into the offices, but also obviously hopefully not confuse the birds. Your point is well taken on the, the north facing, um, front facing. And we have discussed that. Uh, there are things that you can do with the glass. So that birds are not confused by it. And it is something that we will, we have discussed and will take into consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris?
I have a question and it's really more of a curio, curiosity, which is inside the building on the second floor, you have some rooms that are labeled hotel. And what does that mean?
The staff have to stay overnight sometimes. No. But telling is a term that's used when it, it is actually sort of a.
The telling is a term that's used when it is actually sort of a touchdown space. So it's not designated to any specific employee, but it's a place where, um, you know, sometimes they have auditors that come in. Um, sometimes there's some, a staff member that's usually located somewhere else that needs to spend the day there. So it's a, it's a touchdown space, much like a hotel is a touchdown space.
Thank you.
Well, since we're on the, on the, uh, subject of room names, I will ask about the rooms next door, which are CUSO. What does that mean?
Oh, boy, I knew somebody was going to ask me that question and, um, it's, so it's insurance, it's an acronym. I'm looking to see if somebody is sending me credit union service organization. It, it's a company that services credit unions exclusively. That's coming from, uh, UMass Five.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so this is, I think, also not in the purview of the planning board, but I will say that I was a little bit, I guess misled by the use of the term community room. Uh, by the way you described it, where it's basically a room for the staff and very rarely would be a community space. Is that?
Well, I would, I guess the way that I would phrase it is that on a, a day-to-day, um, basis, it's for staff, but, uh, community organizations could use it through the credit union. Um,
So maybe after hours?
Uh.
Yeah, I think, I think what I was starting to be concerned about was the segregation of the public from banking spaces, uh, when the community came and used that room. Um, you know, we did, we reviewed a, a library proposal, uh, from your office for the North Amherst Library a year or so ago, where the community room was right off the main entrance. So you could have the main entrance and the community room open at the same time you were, you did not have access to the library. And so if this were a community room that was going to be used after hours, uh, I would think that the, the bank might want to be able to segregate the public and keep them out of the banking spaces when bit, very little of their staff was there.
Yeah, so we did, we did, um, let me get to the floor plans. Give me a second here. Um, we have thought about that and there are six, we're proposing that there will be security screens that, uh, or gates that roll down from the ceiling and block off this lobby space. So, uh, someone coming in after hours would be able to use the elevator or the stairs. We'd also have a security, um, screen that comes down right in front of the ITM area. So if anyone decided to catapult over the railing down into the lobby, they're, they're basically stuck in this space. Um, yeah, so I, that is a good point and we did think about that. Um, and so we are trying to make it secure but accessible. We really felt it was important, you know, on that second floor level to be able to see the community room, um, so that people know that, that, you know, there might be trainings there or, um, there might be community events like an arrive at five or, uh, an organization might use it as a board meeting place and, and having access to that deck. Um, just, we really wanted to use that. The ITMs are located at the back of the building for precisely the reason you talked about in terms of noise at the front. We wanted to block the Route 9 noise as much as possible. So, good, yes, we've thought about it and I understand what you're talking about.
Okay. All right. Uh, Andrew?
Thanks, Doug. I, um, a, just a thought and wasn't sure who would be the best person to answer this, but, you know, with, with the current layout, with the canopy and items in the back, are there any additional like security precautions that are made just for customer safety? Um, if, you know, you're back there after hours, can you, can you be seen from the road at all?
It is, uh, so I don't have the site plan. It is slightly at an angle. I mean, certainly you are shielded from the road. At some point, there will, it will be well lit. There will be cameras in those locations for security.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not sure that even somebody going by on Route 9 would notice if something was happening on the side of the building. Necessarily. So I think the cameras and the lighting is what makes it secure.
All right. I had sort of a similar reaction to the floor plan on the first floor, which had no windows on the south side of the building. Um, and, and given the way you've done the circulation, um, and, and that there is no actual drive-up teller window. So, you know, just the fact that there are no windows on that end, uh, just made me sort of wonder how secure I would feel about doing my banking back there, uh, without anybody available to, to see if I had a problem.
Well, uh, the ITMs are people. Um, much like we're having a discussion right here, there would be a person in those boxes speaking to you. Um, and there aren't any windows on the south side because that is primarily the mechanical spaces, the IT. Um, there is a, a workroom space where cash is handled, so, and the bathroom and the stair. There's no need for, um, windows there. Uh, and so the, the teller, it is not the traditional teller window that you are used to going to. It doesn't work with that circulation loop to have a teller in that location.
Right. Right. Okay. All right. Um, any other comments from any of the members of the board? If not, we'll go on to public comment.
And I guess, I guess I just wanted to add to that, that if you weren't comfortable going to the ITMs at night, um, you can always park and go to the vestibule ITMs or ATMs at the front, which will be very well lit and very visible from late night.
Great. Thank you. I, I will also say I appreciated the, the completeness of the site drawings and, uh, and the architectural drawings. Uh, you gave us a really effective, uh, picture of, of the project.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment in this hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Uh, Chris, uh, have we received, uh, any, all the feedback from all the other town departments? So that might need to comment on this. Uh, are we in a position to vote and close this hearing this evening? Or do we really need to continue it?
I think you're in a position to vote and close it. I think you've received com- comments from the town engineer and from the fire department, but I would like to ask my colleague Nate Loy, uh, to confirm that.
Okay, Nate?
Sure, yeah, you know, Conservation Commission will issue the order of conditions and, you know, um, the town engineer and fire have looked at it and provided comments. I will say in the development application report, I did call attention to the size of the monument sign is, is larger than it, um, you know, than the bylaw allows, so there will have to be a waiver requested there or granted for the size of the sign. Um, and then the, you know, interestingly enough, with the new dumpster location, there is a, you know, there's, was a retaining wall with a six-foot fence on top. And so the effective height was, um, you know, say at one point it was about 10 feet, about, you know, maybe six or seven feet from the property line. So there needed to be, um, again, a modification of that setback, um, you, with through 6.29, given that the building commissioner would, you know, because the fe- the, the fence is really right on top of the retaining wall. So we're considering that, you know, one structure in terms of height within the setback. And so, um, maybe that's changed, given the new dumpster location, that the overall height, um, meets, you know, the, you know, that dimensional standard. But, um, no, I think everything else is all right. You know, um, I, I do think that, you know, in my application report, there were, you know, some questions about the amount of screening to Hawkins Meadow and if there is sufficient screening for car headlights or after hour use or if the, you know, how much illumination is, is being provided over the ITMs and ATMs at night. And so, um, you know, the hedge isn't on their property. It's like there are a few shade, shade trees planted along that edge. But, um, you know, I just really want to make sure that that's, you know, there's sufficient screening there. I, I think that's about, about it.
Okay. So would the, uh, conditions or do, do we have the conditions drafted?
We do.
All right. Um, maybe we should.
May I just say you have findings and conditions drafted, um, by, by Nate? So he may want to walk you through those.
Yeah, I think we're going to want to do that. Janet? Um, and, and at some point, if we're gonna, and, uh, we may want to take a break. Um, go ahead, Janet.
So I was wondering about the snow storage issue that Andrew had raised earlier because that wasn't really answered. Um, I think I'd be interested in hearing what the Conservation Commission says, especially if it changes how the site is used. And then I haven't read the draft conditions at all. And so I don't know if, it seems like if we start going through that and including some of the things that the town engineer, I don't know if they're in the draft conditions. He seems to have a lot of comments and so I just put that out there. Um, and then also I'd, I'd like to look at the lighting around the ATM just to see. I didn't really pay attention to whether light would be going to Hawkins Meadow or what. So.
Yeah, I mean, one question I had, which wasn't answered is, you know, sometimes on drive-throughs, they have like a marquee sign, you know, whether it's like just a symbols of green checker, you know, green, red, yellow, just to let you know that it's open, you know, LED signs. And I don't, I don't know if that's, if that's, um, you know, it wasn't mentioned or, you know, what kind of signage there might be to say that the lane is open or closed or, you know, and how bright that would be if it was on 24 hours a day. But is there something proposed along ea- above each drive aisle to indicate? Or is it just, you know, it's always open, I guess, or always on?
Correct.
Yep. No, no LED signage.
So you wouldn't find out if it was out of order until you got up to it?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll try to always. Road cones are always an option.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. Janet, is your hand, uh, legacy or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, how do, how do folks feel? Do you want to continue through this, uh, the findings and conditions this, this evening? Or would you like to do that at a later meeting? Not seeing any, any volunteers to respond to that. Uh, Tom?
I think it depends on what we still have on the agenda because a lot of times reading through all of those things can take quite an epic amount of time, um, especially if they're subtle word changes or, um, amendments that are made throughout that process. So, um, I think it's a, it's a question about, um, how, how much time we want to dedicate to it and, and, um, whether or not there's a, an immediate rush to make sure that this gets approved prior to our next meeting.
Well, the, the primary thing left on our agenda is the site plan review and special permit for the, the other project on Main Street. And we do have members of that team waiting in the wings for their presentation. Um, and so I, I mean, I guess I'm inclined to think we should probably, uh, stop for this evening, uh, or sometime soon and continue this hearing to a later date. Uh, maybe when we can get, we can all review the findings and conditions a little bit more.
And, Mr. Ch-
Yes.
From our, from our perspective, yeah, I, I think, um, you know, we're on, we're, we're under agreement. We've got certain contingencies we need to make, but we also want to be respectful of, of your time. We gave you a lot of information this evening. We don't want you to rush it. Um, I think we, we see where this is going. So I guess we would have two requests if we were going to continue, maybe three requests. One, hopefully to that first June meeting that you have. Um, second, uh, let us know tonight if there's anything else that, that we need to provide to you in order to get an approval. And then third, if you are going to approve it at that meeting, just to turn around the decision as, as soon as possible thereafter. And I think, you know, Nate and Chris have done a great job of preparing the findings and the conditions. So I think to actually put it into a decision won't, won't be that much, but that's not my work to do. It's theirs. So I just want to be respectful of all that. So that would, if, if it's something that the, the, um, board would like to do is to continue it, I think, you know, with those things in mind, we'd be fine with it.
Okay. Uh, Chris, what do we have on the agenda for the beginning of June?
For the beginning of June, Mark, uh, June 1st, you have, um, flood mapping, which is kind of a big thing, but I'm not sure how much detail you want to get into on that. Um, then we have Ron Levertier with a kind of a small change to a property on West Street. Um, he's presenting his entire site plan because it's necessary to show it to you, but I don't think the changes are significant. And then you have the, um, Mr. Robleski's subdivision plan, which was coming back before you on June 1st, um, which does have a lot of detail related to it. So, um, so those are the three things. Flood mapping, Ron Levertier Small Project and the Center Eastway Subdivision Plan.
Right. Right. And, and we're also going to be talking this evening about Mr. Robleski's Main Street project.
That's right.
Kind of separately from the subdivision plan. And I think there's a good chance that's going to come back too.
I think if you were just reviewing, um, findings and conditions that night, maybe, you know, getting some small amount of information that might be additional that the applicant wanted to submit, that you could get through it on June 1st.
Okay. I think I, I mean, how does the board feel? Uh, I think I'm inclined to continue this evening. I think we should be clear with Tom and his, his group about what else we want. Um, and that includes what the staff wants as well as what the board wants.
So maybe you could ask Nate if he feels that there's any further information that needs to be, um, submitted?
Sure. So, you know, I can, I'll run down the notes that, you know, wasn't, you know, the, you know, board members mentioned. And then I can just go over some of my questions. You know, we had, you know, it can be either a condition or it could be if it's ready for next meeting, you know, new plantings along the Green Leaves, um, property line, um, you know, plans for the back deck, both in terms of planting or use. I do think, you know, if the community room in the deck are used publicly or for events, it could impact parking or it could impact noise or light if after hours. So, I mean, you know, some clarity there. Um, you know, I'm still, you know, I'm still curious to know about like how that evergreen hedge would be maintained or if UMass Five could have an agreement with Hawkins Meadow, just because it is not on their property, but it is really significant right now. Um,
Is snow removal, uh, you know, it sounded like that was kind of in flux from the Conservation Commission?
Well, I was thinking that that could be achieved without changes to the site, but perhaps we can leave that up to the applicants.
Or in the, in the management plan?
Man, right. Because it could be just that it could also be trucked and removed as necessary, right? So there's some snow storage remove areas and then it just is, you know, hauled offsite i- if, if necessary.
Right. Rachel had mentioned that.
You know, I think, you know, the permeable pavement's great. One of the conditions were, was that it would be maintained and an annual report submitted. I mean, because it's not supposed to be sanded, it needs to be vacuumed twice a year. Um, you know, so it, it works if it's maintained, um, that, you know, possibly would be a condition. Um, you know, perhaps traffic calming when entering, but that's not, um, perhaps necessary. I mean, I like the idea of maybe moving the, the staff parking. So I don't know if that needs to be formalized, you know, to that east side. Um, you know, I, I still think the lighting, whether that could be dimmed or, you know, some explanation of whether, you know, is, is there, it could be dimmed at 11 or, you know, how, how does that site lighting work after hours? If there's any changes to the front, you know, there's a, a number of comments about that the front may not be used. That the front may not be used for seating. So is, you know, would that really be changed in terms of a site design? With plantings. And then. You know, the bike location. So would that be moved to the front or have be a, you know, have a shelter cover to it? So. You know, those are the comments from the board, kind of a summary of those. I see there's hands. I would say for my comments, just, you know, we need to just clarify the distance of the dumpster location to the side yard setback. I think it was noted on a plan, but not. I didn't see that distance. And I think that's, you know, they covered most everything else.
All right. The findings and conditions that have been drafted. I didn't see those in my packet. Did those come as a later email that I didn't open before this meeting?
Yes.
Those came as an email today, I think in the middle of the day. Is that right Nate?
Or was it yesterday? I can't remember if it was yesterday.
Might have been yesterday.
All right, so we can all look for those. So Alan, I'll call on you. You may have some sort of responses to those that list.
The only one I I just wanted a little more clarification on is the use of the deck and. On it, so we can specifically respond to that, you know, after hours might be. Two, three, four times a year and wouldn't ever go past like eight or nine PM at night. What specifically do you want as a response regarding that?
Well, sure, like, for instance, is it associated with the UMass Five College Credit Union? Or would it be? You know, could it be an outside organization that's renting it for an event, but somehow associated with? The bank, you know, or credit union? So, or is it just? You know, anyone could, you know, for instance, like a nonprofit could hold a fundraiser event there that isn't somehow related to. The credit union. So, you know, that, I guess, you know, kind of more of the programmatic. Element of it.
We'll, we'll, we'll review that, but my understanding is that. There will always be someone from the credit union onsite when the building is in use. So it's not like it would just be open to the public without. Representative there.
Sure, my my thought would be just, you know, in terms of noise or other things for the neighbors, you know, if they're, you know, having a condition about. Right, it's, you know, how, whether it's, there's an end time or how it's used in terms of, you know, it's an, it's considered an office use, right? The zoning category, these categories, office use, so just how that, those two interact.
And and it could impact parking if you were. You know, if you had, if you filled that community room and the deck with. People standing, you could have probably 100 people in there.
Yes, and we've talked about that with UMass Five, and they would be providing a shuttle service from their West Gate location, which has. Much more parking. Rachel, were you gonna chime in about? That's exactly the same thing. Yeah.
All right, so so maybe.
Are those types of responses acceptable?
And and I think they probably ought to go into the management plans. Because that's kind of where the. Where the bank essentially commits to sort of the conditions of the operation of the property.
Right, so revise management plan. I think that's good, Doug, right? So if there's an end time to the event or parking overflow or. Potential conflict with banking hours, right? Or maximum occupancy of an event.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, Janet.
I just, I wanted to add in terms of, you know, things to consider is I, Jason Skills had a long list of items. I'm not sure if they made their way into the. Conditions or into changes in the plans. So he he has like a May 11th letter. Also, I think the community space can actually be a very positive thing, especially for the different apartment complexes nearby. They may not have that kind of space for themselves. Maybe for traffic calming, a change in surface as you come off of Route 9, and it's kind of bumpier, and you're kind of automatically slow like cobbles or something. And then also, I am interested in the dimming of the lights at night, because I can, I'm sure it's not going to be looking like. You know, an air, you know, a spacecraft going up into the air, but I would think especially near the wetland. In the ATM area, you could just, I could see a million moths coming in or animals coming off the wetland. You want it safe, but you know, if your lights are on all night, it's not good for the animals. And I'm sure the people next door may be noticing that and and things like that. So. Just those are my ads, also on behalf of Jason Skills.
All right, thanks Janet.
You know, one thing we didn't discuss was all the signs, you know, there is the, you know, the, the kind of commercial signs, you know, so there's the monument sign, and then the signs on the building, and then there's a number of site signs.
Right.
You know, entry, exit, HP parking, a number of those. And so, you know, it looks like a lot of those signs are. Illuminated from within, right? So the entry and exit signs, and some others. And so I. You know, it was in the packet and it was discussed in the development application report, but it wasn't discussed much tonight. So I don't know if there's any. Comments or questions about that, but.
Yeah, we could, we could run through that if you want.
Yeah, I, you know, I I don't know how many people from your team you would want to bring back. Yeah, at the beginning of June, but it it might be helpful that we went through it tonight.
So if everybody can see my screen, we've got the site, which you're familiar with right now. Along with the proposed signage. So you've got. Entrance sign. Directional sign. Directional sign. ATM video teller and clearance signs above the ITM ATM. Directional sign, which may be relocated depending upon where the the dumpster enclosure actually gets located. And then another directional sign along with the. Do not enter and a no left turn. And also another do not enter and a stop sign here. So for traffic signals. And then a not an exit sign on this side, just so folks who, by whatever reason. Back out of the parking spikes, think they can come out this way. They would have that not an exit sign here. You've got the building signage, and so you've got a backlit sign at the top of the building that was shown on the renderings. I think that's 50 square feet, so that's compliant. You also have this. Mission statement sign, the one that's going to be externally illuminated that Alan mentioned, you know, the the, I'll call it a can, is going to be. Up in this pergola shining down onto the the. Mission statement. I think that's about 28 square feet. Then I'll skip down to. The monument sign. And so, and and Rachel, I may ask that you get the site plan back up so we can show the. The monument sign in relation to the traveled way. But a lot of the comments that we heard tonight, I think, you know, Maria had. Brought it up, I think Andrew had brought something up about just. Sightline, sight distance, traveling, speed of travel on the public way. So one of the things that that we thought was important was to get a sign that fit into the neighborhood. But was pulled up a little closer to the street, not not right on the property line, but closer to the street. So that the motoring public would be able to know. What's there and then where the entrance is. So we're proposing a 60 square foot sign. That's about seven and a half feet high, I think. With this nice stone base. And stone backing, and then you've got that, you know, it shows is probably a little bit brighter purple here. And I think only the letters here are what is going to be illuminated at night. It's not the whole backing, it's just. Those letters that are illuminated. And and what I'll do is I will, well, I can stay on here if you have questions specifically about the signage. But I'll turn it to Rachel to show the 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 location of the sign. Because it was all thought out in in, you know, that initial scoping analysis they did.
All right, thanks, Tom. Chris, I had seen your hand until just a moment ago.
My question has been answered. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Rachel.
As as Tom mentioned, this is the location of the monument sign. So as you're coming down Route 9. You have time to see it and know that you are that you've arrived and you have time to turn in. And then the comment about the the setback for the fence, the setback from the fence is. Shown on the plan that we that we have. So the fences in this plan is 7.67 feet setback. For that 9.73 foot tall wall plus fence overall height. The wall being 3.73 feet.
And even if we rotated it, it's likely that it would still, because I think in that that future condition and. Before we come back, I will probably have that location in the plan showing the side yard setback distance. I didn't see that pave, the area of pavement changing in the revised condition for the dumpster. So I would expect. We do still need that that waiver.
All right. All right, so. Does anybody want to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
I I just wanted to add, and if I can quickly share my screen in terms of, I know one of the questions that came up with context. And I quickly. Through what you experience as you're coming down Route 9. And you can see over on the the left side of my screen is the FL Roberts sign, which is about. So we have an intern who went out and measured all the signs surrounding this area, and that one is about 78 square feet, and the proposed. Sign, I think, was about 61 square feet. So just for context, it is. At least balanced on both sides of the street.
Thank you. All right. We, does anybody have a motion to continue the hearing? To June 1st, Chris, do you have a date? Or do you have a time we should put in there?
Yes, I think you should put in. Seven. Fifteen. I think the. Mr. Robleski is coming back at 7:35, then we have flood mapping at 7:45, and we have. Round the Verdi or, excuse me, 6:45 and round the Verdi or at 7:00. So if you said 7:15 or 7:30, that'll probably be fine.
All right, so we need a motion to continue the hearing to, is it June 1st at 7:15?
Yep.
PM. Tom.
Don't move.
Andrew.
So seconded.
Thank you both. And thank you, Tom, and. Rachel and Alan and your teams for being with us, and we'll hope to see some of you in on June 1st.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We need to vote.
Need to vote.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. All right, so board, shall we vote on our continuation? Maria?
Yes, approve.
And Tom?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Janet?
Hi.
Johanna? Looks like we've lost Johanna. Well, I'll vote aye. And Johanna was absent.
Do we know, just for point of clarification, do we know when she dropped off? I'm just thinking of. Quorum, her ability to vote at the next hearing, Mullins Rule, all of those things. So maybe if we could just. See if she heard all of the substance, then she would still qualify to vote at the next.
Well, she certainly made comments fairly far into your presentation. And but of course, the 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 recording will tell us exactly where she dropped off.
Perfect. Okay.
I think she probably heard enough to vote.
Great.
You might guess, but Pam and I will put our heads together and figure out the time.
Okay, board members. The time is 8:56. Why don't we take a five minute break? We're only running one hour behind our usual break. And we'll see you back at one minute after nine. Please mute and turn off your camera. Johanna, you're back. We we noticed you left.
I'm back. Sorry about that. I had to sing my kids' songs.
Well, we thought you didn't leave very long ago.
I sent you and Chris an email so that we have the timestamp for.
Okay. And let me look at my email. Ah, 8:51. So that was only 10 minutes ago.
I'm a fast singer.
Okay, yeah, well, we we wanted to be sure you heard enough of that. Earlier presentation that you can continue and vote on the. Final approval. But that seems like it was was plenty of participate, participation to qualify.
Great.
And. We were all supposed to come back from. We were all supposed to come back from break at nine oh one, so. Here we are.
Yeah.
I'm gonna start moving the other folks in for the next public hearing. Okay, Mr. Marshall?
Yes, that'd be great. Mister Reedy was such a surprise.
Um, I'm unable to start my video, but I think I can speak.
Uh, we can hear you, Janet, and are you able to see all of us?
I can see everybody but Andrew, Nate. And. Um.
Yeah, and you can see, you can see the screen. You'll be able to see when people share screen.
Yeah, but where did I go?
Well, I've had trouble with my video at work lately and it seems to be just where the camera plugs into the laptop.
Back, I'm back.
There you are. Okay, good.
I think I hit the wrong button.
Okay.
I left when I instead of, I don't know.
All right, uh, so we're. Waiting on Andrew. Chris, uh, is is Nate involved in this one? I saw you shake your head, but you're muted, so I'll assume the answer is we could start.
Well, you can start without Nate. Yep.
Okay, and I see Andrew's back, so we're all here. Okay, so the time, uh, at least by my clock is nine oh four. And we will continue our meeting. Uh, with item. Five in the agenda for this evening. All right. So in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, this public hearing has been duly advertised. And notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing. The opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. Regarding site plan review twenty twenty two dash fourteen and special permit twenty twenty two dash zero five. Center East LLC. Four forty six and four sixty two Main Street. Request site plan review approval under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw. To construct seventeen thousand square foot, twenty seven unit residential mixed use building. Including three affordable units with sight lighting and landscaping. And to request a modification of the total number of parking spaces. Required for the mixed use building under sections seven point zero 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 zero. And seven point nine of the zoning bylaw. And seek small car parking under section seven point one oh four of the zoning bylaw. To co-locate with the existing mixed use building known as four forty six Main Street. And the mixed use building known as four sixty two Main Street. Which was authorized by site plan review twenty twenty dash zero one and site plan review twenty twenty dash zero five. And any subsequent amendments. And request a special permit. To extinguish all special permits associated with parcel fourteen B dash sixty six. Uh, from map fourteen B parcel sixty six and sixty eight in the BN zoning district. First of all, are there any board member disclosures for this project? I do not see any. All right, let's go right into the presentation. Tom, you and your new team for this particular project. Uh, you have the floor and take it away.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mister Chair, members of the board. For the record, Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson here in Amherst. Here on behalf of Center East, Mister Robleski, um, owner of Center East. Four forty six, four sixty two Main Street for, as the chairman mentioned, a site plan review approval for the. New proposed seventeen thousand square foot mixed use building. Uh, to complement the other mixed use buildings on the site, uh, as well as a. I guess modification by extinguishment of the existing special permits. Um, with me this evening, so John Robleski, who I'm sure you're all familiar with by this point. Mike Lou from Berkshire Design and then also Pam, if you could let in Rachel Stevens, I I think Rachel's, um, she's our architect, so. Mike's the site designer and Rachel's the architect who can, who can really walk you through, um. The designs. But by way of a little bit of background, uh, I'm sure you've all been to the site numerous times, um, for Mister Robles, Mister Robleski's. Um, initial site plan approval for the newest mixed use building. And then for the modification of that approval to increase the number of dwelling units. Um, we've also, as you all know, we've, we've proposed a, we filed a preliminary subdivision plan, we followed that up. Within seven months with a definitive subdivision plan that we are working through that process. Literally simultaneously with this application. Um, that has the effect of freezing zoning and like we had talked about in that. Hearing, but I'll mention here. The mixed use zoning bylaw, which we we think is a great bylaw, but probably more appropriate to. Downtown, South Pleasant Street, North Pleasant Street. Um, Mister Robleski's in the the BN zoning district. It's, there's only a couple of parcels in town that's in that BN zoning district. And the mixed use zoning bylaw changed to increase to require thirty percent of the first floor. Floor area. Um. And so just Mister Robleski's thinking was given this site's location. Not necessarily in the commercial corridor like the North Pleasant Street, South Pleasant Street area. Um, he looked to free zoning and we're, like I said, in the process of freezing that zoning. So that he didn't have to provide that thirty percent of the commercial space for this new mixed use. Building. So that's a little bit of a context. You know, as I mentioned, it's a seventeen thousand square foot building, twenty seven proposed. Units, including three affordable units, um, three hundred and thirty commercial, uh, three hundred and thirty square feet of commercial space. Um, if approved, there is the existing mixed use building that you most recently approved that has twenty four units in it. Uh, ten one bedroom, nine two bedroom, one three bedroom and four studios, as long as well as commercial space. There's the existing mixed use building. At the corner of Gray and Main. Uh, maybe I'll just. Share my screen quickly so you can. So this is, uh, obviously this building's no longer here. This building's no longer here. There is a building in this area where my, my mouse and cursor is. This building, uh, will remain and that's, uh, it's mixed use. There's about seventeen hundred and sixty eight square feet of commercial space there currently and a. Three bedroom residential unit. And then what we're proposing, as you'll see, um, through through both of the designers' presentation. We're proposing that seventeen thousand square foot, twenty seven unit. Will have fourteen one bedrooms, thirteen studios and three hundred and thirty square feet of commercial space. So at the end of the day, you're looking at, as as I don't know if I've mentioned it, but a wonderful infill development. A total of sixty five beds on site and fifty two, uh, dwelling units. And and so. You know, with that, I I think I'll turn it over to Mike to walk you through the site and then we'll turn it over to Rachel to talk a little bit about the design. And then we can come back and and talk a little about management, um, maybe to get a little bit ahead of ourselves. We don't have, as you saw on the project application report, final sign off from Jason Skiles. So town engineer, fire department, so we completely expect this to be continued. So this isn't one that we're asking you to. Rush to close this evening. So if you do have questions and we can't answer them tonight, we'll be able to answer them for the next hearing. So. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, um, and let him present.
Uh, Tom, um, I have to butt and ask. Procedural before you go to your presentation. And that is, uh, since you're doing. This set of app. Can parallel with the final subdivision plan. What incentive have to submit the final subdivision plan, carry that process to completion if we prove this project. Site.
So because the. The way that the the. The law works is, um, any. Building permit or special permit issued after the first publication of notice for a bylaw change. Is under that new bylaw. And so if we didn't freeze the zoning, I think we might have lost the chair if I'm looking at the screen correctly. I don't know if that's the case, but it looks to me to be the case.
Looks like we lost him temporarily, I hope.
Well.
There he is.
There he is. Mister Chairman.
Here he is.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. Zoom just, uh. Kicked me out.
You had gotten a little broken up in your, in your question.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, Tom, I missed most of your explanation there.
We, we noticed that you had dropped off, so I I stopped talking. Um, so the the comment was that the way that the law is written, it's. Any building permit or special permit issued after the first publication of notice of a new bylaw. Um, is subject to that bylaw. Unless. What we had done is attempt to free zoning, so. We'll have to go through that subdivision process to get the endorsement in order to actually freeze the zoning. Otherwise, we'll be subject to the the current zoning bylaw. So the incentive to actually follow through.
So the, so the incentive to follow through is that you won't get a building permit. Unless you follow through.
Correct, not for what we're proposing now. We would have to comply with the new zoning by.
Right, okay, all right, so I just. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, uh, Mike, I'll turn it over to you. Um, to walk through the site.
Okay, let's see, oops. Hold on a sec, I gotta find my right screen here. Where's my folder? There we go. All right, um. Can you all see that? Think, okay, so I'm just gonna use this, um, to present the site. Layout and design and I have the, um, black and white. Uh, plans that were submitted to you if we need to, um, look at anything in detail or go over that. But basically, this, um. Outline here that's colored in. Represents the extent of the site. Currently, it's two parcels. Um. Here, next to Gray Street in Maine at the corner is four forty six. This is the existing house. Um, you'll see, um, Rachel from Maple Street Architects, um, arch, uh, yep, they have some. Very nice, uh, renderings of the proposal, so you'll see that, uh, pictured later. And also for those of you who have gone on the site visit, you you familiar with, um, what that looks like.
Mike?
Yes.
Would you mind minimizing the? Bar to the right so that we get more image?
Oh, okay, hold on.
Just on that little, yeah, there we go.
Okay, I can blow that up a little bit too. Um, so and then on the east side is, uh, four sixty two or the building that kind of we. Refer to as Center East. Um. The Center East Building Phase One, which is this, which you approved, um, recently. Um, the proposal, um, the current building sits approximately right in this area. It had, or it had been demolished or taken down. Um, the proposal is to maintain. Basically, four sixty two in its current state, which includes this driveway that comes up. Into this parking at the north end and there's a, an additional seven spaces here, um, along the east side. There's three spaces, uh, here on the west side of the driveway. Um. Change the configuration of the existing parking lot that was. Kind of in a, in a north-south orientation and changing it to an east-west orientation to make room. To fit this new L-shaped building. Um, into the site. The footprint is fifty five hundred square foot plus for the new building. Um, it's on three stories and and there you get that approximately seventeen thousand square foot of, um, um, space on the, on. Divided on the three floors. Um, what's nice about this building and Rachel will talk about a little, uh, later, but this building includes an indoor bike storage. Um, space and an indoor trash. Collection. Uh, and recycle, uh, space so that, you know, there's, we're not, there's no dumpster or outdoor dumpster proposed on this site. It'll, it'll all be, you know, picked up with the truck entering the site and wheeling those, um, those bins out to the truck and and getting them picked up that way. Um, but the idea was to try to maintain the view for, um, along Gray Street and Main Street. You know, especially as you're traveling down Main Street from the center of town, so try to maintain this green space in the front. Uh, we had actually looked at some ideas of of, you know, being able to add parking in the front, but you know, ultimately, we. Um, John primarily decided that, you know, we wanted to try to, uh, get as much as we could in here and maintain this green space and it's. Pretty much in its, its existing, um, condition. Um. Let's see, so. The, um. I I don't know if you want me to go into the zoning and coverage and that, but we we do fall, uh, under the, um, maximum allowed building coverage and site. Uh, coverage. Um, the, the way that the drainage works is we're. This parking lot, the new parking lot is actually about fourteen hundred square feet smaller in pavement than the existing parking lot. So we are actually reducing. The, uh, runoff from paved areas or or that dirty, you know, water. Um, we will be. Uh, catching that in a storm scepter or storm, uh, water treatment chamber before, um, it's. Currently, the design calls for it being discharged into a, um, underground detention basin, which we're gonna be putting in this lawn area to the, um. To the southwest part of the site, but we wanted to obviously maintain that as green space. Um. The way and the drainage on the former. Um, a formerly approved project here, it's, it's not being changed. Water is still from the parking lots primarily drains. Uh, north to south, there's a storm water treatment chamber. Let me increase this a bit. Um, there's a existing storm water treatment chamber right here. Water is caught here. It it pump, it's a piped back into an underground detention basin that's in this green space. To the south of the building. Um, this also catches roof water runoff from this, uh, building. And then the overflow is piped back through a, such, um, an outlet control structure and then back into the street. Uh. Town's drainage system. So we're not touching that and we're trying not to direct any of the, um, runoff from the western part of the site. All this primarily is being, um, the, the. Drainage or the storm water runoff from the parking lot and the new roof, as well as this existing house is being. Uh, funneled to the underground detention basin in this area and we can look at that layout on the, um. On the black and white plans if you'd like, but it's the same, it's the same system. Um, it's called an R tank. Um, people kind of refer to them as milk crates. But, um, they're basically open. Um, structures that you can stack if if needed to increase volume. Um, but they're, they are rated H twenty, so, uh, for vehicular loading, but in this case, obviously, we don't have, they're not being put under paved areas or or vehicular ways. Um, they're under both under green, um, spaces. Um, they're easy to maintain. They have, typically, they have, um, observation ports that you can open and kind of do an inspection to make sure that. You know, water's draining out, siltations not being collected within, within that structure. Um. But the underground detention basins are are used for infiltration, attenuation of of the peak flows. Um, and then obviously to release any overflow slowly, um, back into the city system if if they overflow. Um, in terms of the, um, the landscaping, these trees along the street, along Gray Street and these three. Um, at the front, at Main Street are existing trees. There's a cluster of four maples. There's one right here. You can see it kind of. In half tone line. Right there near the new curb cut. right there near the new curb cut. We thought we would that we would lose that one, but we actually want to try to save it. And that might involve some air spading of this existing tree. It might involve shifting this curb cut a couple of more feet to the north if if you know that'll help. I think that we'd like to try to save all these, the the four maples here. These two are large crap apple trees, and these three along Main Street are beech trees, which are an interesting choice. But, you know, those those have the potential to get quite large, as you might know, and there's an existing wood rail fence right here. You can see that in the shaded line that runs up to the existing curb cut to the parking lot, which is right here. We want to maintain that, obviously. Originally, we thought we'd take it down, but we changed our minds and decided to keep it, you know, in keeping with the the visual, the aesthetic, the view, you know, of this kind of important corner of the the property. Not sure, we have, we don't have a snow plan, but seeing how that, you know, comes up. There are places that snow is stored now in the newer part of the design. We have this swell where snort, snow could be plowed to. There's green space here along the edge. There's green space along here along the existing pavement, which is the majority of that paved area and parking. There's significant green space to the north here. There's spaces to pile snow along the edge of the driveway and then off to the edge of the parking spaces here on the east side. And obviously, as you probably know, in severe cases, a lot of times, you know, some of these corner spaces, if you will, are used to pile snow and haul it offsite, truck it offsite as needed. John has done a lot of research and parking counts at this existing building as well as other developments in town, and I'm I'm gonna let him do a presentation later about the parking, the numbers and figures, but in total, there are forty-seven parking spaces within this site. And I believe, I can't remember, what was the, I forget what the unit count was, but I think there's fifty-one total units, not bedrooms, but units. And John's gonna present the justification for the for the number of parking that is proposed. But again, this is, as Tom mentioned, this is a great infill project. It's, I think it's just over two thousand feet to the center of town, so that's an easy, you know, five-minute walk. It's it's within walking distance to to the university. Obviously, it's very close to Amherst College. It's on a bus route. There's a bus stop right here. You can see the shelter and pull-off on Main Street. The site is about, the the railroad tracks are about the midpoint between you know, South, South Pleasant, North Pleasant and Southeast Street, Northeast Street intersection to the east. So this, you know, this site, this property here, it's also, you know, within walking distance to, you know, to the east, to the village center to south, or I should say, I guess you call it the southeast village, Southeast Street Village Center area. That is, you know, obviously slated for development. You know, in the Village Center District there. I probably missed something, so some questions will come up, but we'll be happy to entertain those. I guess at this point, I'd like to turn turn it over to either Rachel, or I'm not sure if John wants to talk about the parking before we get into the architecture. I'll leave that to you, John. And Rachel, if either of you want to go there, and obviously, we can come back to the site plans if and when needed.
I think we should probably let Rachel do her thing on the architecture and then address questions as they come along unless somebody disagrees.
Right, or is everyone seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Great. So we prepared some initial renderings. Again, as the previous team mentioned, we are in schematic design, so we're still making changes. This is a new version from the plans that we submitted a month ago showing some different coloring as requested by the planning board, and we are looking at the different views of the project as you move through the neighborhood. And you see the building in context with the previous building that was occupied in August last year, which has been a nice addition to the neighborhood and has been appreciated by the neighbors in the town. So this is looking to build on that success and and add some more density of housing for the town of Amherst, which I think is a great addition and still maintaining the the existing historic structure on the corner as well. So here are some views looking at the building from across the street. And you can see how it wraps around this existing two-story structure on the corner and relates to the other building. The the first building of Center East Commons. And then here's a view from the north side on Gray Street. This is this is a bird's eye view a little bit so that you can see both buildings in their entirety. It's very shielded from this side, as you can see in the first page rendering. There's a lot of vegetation on this side protecting the larger buildings from the more the single-family residential that's a little bit further north on Gray Street. So you can see here how the building is taking a lot of the same language from the first phase. Similar coloring, but in a contrasting style to blend in as a sort of a neighborhood feel for this unit. And in fact, this building does provide some of the site amenities for the first building that are currently housed in a temporary shed while this building is being designed. So looking at the first floor plan, you can see some of those site amenities. The indoor bicycle storage and the trash and recycling that will be shared for both buildings. There's also a common laundry that is planned for this building only. And mechanical room on this level that that is not residential space, and then the commercial space is an office here on the front corner that is closest to the parking that is nearest to Main Street. And it has a door access from the porch. So it it has the front-facing commercial access. There's also a studio on that end of the building. And the existing building here also provides a doorway that faces the the sidewalk to that existing parking as well. So then you have three main entry points for the other groups of apartments. There's an entry point here that goes upstairs to all second and third floor units. There's an entry point here that serves three floors of units and an entry point here that serves three point three floors of units. There's an affordable unit on each floor. And there is an accessible unit on the first floor, and all of the other units on the first floor are designed to be adaptable, which means they can be made more accessible should the need arise for any of the residents on the first level. They have a little bit of extra space. Their doors are a little extra larger. And then on the second floor, many of the layouts are repeated, and some of them are different where it's over the office space. Here you can see the affordable studio unit and as you can see, there's a mix of studio and one bedroom, which seems to be the most popular type of unit in this area, given a lot of housing for young professionals and students and professors and the like. So here we have the one bedrooms are highlighted in yellow. The studios are highlighted in green. And again, on the third floor, very similar layout. So the elevations don't show the new coloring, but if you have any questions about that, we can talk about that as well. We also have a sign plan. This is the existing sign that has been on the site since before the first project was completed. And now that we have many fewer businesses, as businesses are going more and more remote these days, we're finding. We think it's more appropriate to have a larger sign that announces the complex as a whole, and that would be Center East Commons as a more monument-style sign. And it would be slightly shorter than the existing sign, but with the larger lettering that you can see and gives people a clear idea of where they're accessing the site that would be located here for the main entry here to the parking on both sides of the complex. There's also a sign at this location for the previous projects commercial space and then a sign here that would likely be similar on the front of the office or commercial space at the south end of the new building. So that is the overview and architecture, and as Mike mentioned, also happy to answer any questions that come up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. It's great to see these renderings and give us a good sense of what's what you're proposing. Board members are there. Would you like to make some comments this evening? I think we will probably be continuing this hearing. Would you like to get into it a little bit, or should we move right to a continuation? Not seeing any hands. I'll make a couple of, I have a couple of questions, I guess. My first question is on the site plan. And and the the distance between the existing house and the new building. In my work for institutional clients, the distance I'm seeing between the north end of the house and the south face of the L looks like a lot less than would typically be allowed by the building code. And it also looks rather unpleasant for the people that might be in the units that look right out at the end of the house. So I wondered if you could talk about that.
I can give you the distances and maybe Rachel can talk about the 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 building code issues with that, but basically, can you can see my screen there?
Yes.
From the existing building here to the new wall, that's five feet, I believe. It's thirteen feet from the main wall, which is here. This is kind of like an entry portico or that elongated vestibule, if you will. And then from the east wall of the existing building to the new building wall is also thirteen feet. So we've kept thirteen feet from the main walls and this area within between the two buildings is is going to be or or planned to be like kind of a mechanical space. There will be air handling units here. We are proposing that the the surface just be treated as stone mulch for ease of maintenance and you know, it'll it'll just be more difficult to try to keep up grass or maintain vegetation, shrubs certainly in that area. Along with the, you know, the the mechanical units that would be required to be put on the ground there. So those are the distances. I wouldn't be able to talk about the code implications with that.
All right. So Rachel, are there any issues with the the short, the small distance between those structures?
Sorry, I was sharing my screen. I couldn't find the mute button. Okay, so the the fire code is something that we started to work on at the very beginning of this project, and we made sure to look at all of the different distances and the implications on the buildings. And this approach that we chose is trying to maximize the it's trying to maximize the visibility of the existing building on the corner of the site to allow the new building to take a second stage to that building. And by wrapping it around, it allows that new building to have a sort of a smaller presence on Gray Street as well as Main Street. And we're maintaining five feet from the north of that shed, which will allow us to provide a one-hour rating on that shed wall. And that will give us the the ability to have windows on the south side of the new building, and then the thirteen-foot distance allows us to have windows on both buildings and to maintain that airspace there as required by code. So we have looked at that very carefully and and have a a setback plan in place to discuss with Mike Roy for the for the fire department. We we do recognize that that's, as the chair mentioned, it's maybe not the best view from the south windows of that one particular unit that's right up against the shed. But it is a really nice view up on the on the other units towards the south, and so we wanted to make sure that we provided some of that south view for the upper units and the lower units will be looking into the courtyard, and that's something that if somebody is looking for a unit that may not be more publicly facing, they might choose a unit that has more of an interior focus. We've noticed that we do a lot of residential design for a lot of different clients. And some clients are more inwardly focused in their residences, and some are more outwardly focused, and a lot of the residents at the first building don't ever open their curtains, and that's true of other multifamily residential units that we've seen. So there are a lot of people who prefer to have a more inwardly focused residence to begin with.
Okay, thank you. I guess the only other question I had was on your your elevation. I guess it would be the east face where the, I think the was it the trash or the bicycle storage was? I didn't see a porch over that door in the elevation. Is that going to be covered or not? Yeah, that 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 door right in that little corner there doesn't look like it has a roof over it. You're on mute.
Rachel, you're muted.
Or else.
Oops.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm having trouble finding that button when I'm screen sharing. So the there's an overhang in the building itself. There's a two-foot overhang from the upper stories over this door. So it's possible that we will, as we fine tune the design, that we can provide an additional overhang for that entry point, but it's something that we feel is already quite protected by the the building architecture above that door.
Okay, thank you. Maria.
Um, I know this will continue, so maybe I'll just make some comments so that maybe for the next round, we can see more information. As far as the architecture, all we had was a gray L shape. So I'm seeing all the architecture for the first time, so it's hard to sort of digest all of it. But hearing what you're saying, Rachel, about how the L building is sort of secondary to the historic front building, I don't really get that sense. I don't really get that sense. I felt like it was looming and I wonder, maybe it's because of that space you were talking about that, you know, it because of the site constraints, you know, in order to get enough parking and all the other things, that building had to be that close to the historic original one. I I do feel like it's not quite doing what you're saying. I'm not sure how to resolve that. But I really appreciate the part of it because we so desperately need infill housing and more mixed use buildings. Close to downtown, on bus routes, walkable, you know, in a five minute radius. That's fantastic. It's just I I do feel like it is sort of hovering over the original building and the historic building, I assume you weren't able to alter the colors or anything, maybe. I mean, that that's probably part of the commission's purview. But if they could tie together better so that the whole parcel is a little more cohesive, maybe it won't feel so jarring, but again, I'm just seeing the architecture for the first time in your presentation, so it's hard to kind of really so maybe at the next round, if you see a little, or if it's in our packets or something, or we didn't get it in our packets, right?
Maria, the we've received the PDFs of the drawings yesterday, maybe it was a it was a link to a Dropbox site.
Oh, okay, I
They were late arrivals.
Okay, I I'm so far behind on emails. Okay, sorry. So that that's on me. Well, so I guess, yeah, my only comment is from maybe next round, if we can see a little bit more like perspective view, just so I feel a little more comfortable that, you know, in reality, it won't feel like this big hulking thing hovering over this original little historic building that you worked so hard to preserve. So but otherwise, yeah, I know we're continuing, so I won't say too much more.
Can I respond to that briefly? So we did submit plans a month ago for this project. These are just updated renderings. The the previous renderings had a different color. And what we sent recently was an updated color scheme. So and I also misspoke this this existing building is it's I don't think it's protected by the historic commission. I think it's I'm sure, sorry, I I'm not sure if it is or not, but it's something that that John is preserving to to preserve the fabric of the neighborhood and to preserve the look of the corner of the site. And he is interested in changing the color at some point. And that's something that we can certainly show in renderings if that would be useful for the for the board to consider. It's it's certainly, I mean, as a two story building, it's certainly always going to feel a lot smaller than this new three story building.
Thanks, Rachel. Chris?
I just wanted to suggest that if you made the color of the front building, the old building more similar to the color of the new building, it might appear to be part of the new building rather than something that kind of sticks out in front. And that might help with the image of something looming over something else.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Janet? Well, hold on, why don't we, Janet, why don't we let John probably respond to that?
Thank you. Yeah, in fact, when the doctors converted that corner building, four forty six from two family, I believe it was, into commercial on the first floor to have their doctor's offices there. That building was actually kind of a light blue. If you look at some of the old file photographs, light, light blue and some darker trim, I think. When the Gadera family bought it and it became Spanish studies abroad building, they wanted to, you know, have more of a look for the European look, I guess. So they painted it the color it is now. So that's how that color came about. But I agree, I'm trying to blend everything there. I did get a lot of positive comments on the color of the the building that we did last year and the way it looks in general. So that's why we kind of blended the two. Just I wanted the opposite color of the front of the one we did last year was kind of blue on the front. So this one here, I want to have the green color in the front and then kind of have the bump outs mimic different colors like the other building.
Okay, thank you, Janet.
So I do appreciate the infill and residential density in the business districts. It's like we're sort of filling in the core. And, you know, with the goal of, you know, obviously, meeting housing needs and also supporting businesses where people can walk to. I am concerned that we're, that the original goal is that we're residential business units, we're going to support businesses is now they're replacing them. And so, you know, we're going from having seven or eight commercial spaces down to three. And they're all except for one is the the new one is quite small. And so I I'd like to talk about that later, be at a different meeting. But I do want to support the comments that Doug made is that I don't know anybody who would want to be staring at a building five feet away with gravel. And then maybe some heating or, you know, cooling units. It's it's sort of, it feels sort of tenement like to me and that built those buildings seem way too close. And I don't know people who want to be staring, you know, I know in New York City, that's the kind of wall you don't want to have. And I don't know. It seems really far from our kind of usual situation in Amherst. So I would think that it just has to move back to give some space. It looks like you're trying to pack a really large building in. And it does have a very looming feeling. It feels like the 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 smaller building is completely surrounded. I think part of the problem, so I feel like it has to be sort of reduced in size or maybe the front of the building look more like the front of a building on Main Street with more details, like a deeper porch. Some more details around the windows. A small, like smaller size, it does, it just feels like that building is surrounding that little house and you're just trying to put in as much as you can. And the details on the window or on the house itself. It's just very flat and plain and very blank to me. So I I just think there has to be some a better kind of fit in terms of the vibe of Main Street. I mean, Main Street is now full of sort of a lot of you know, different houses, kind of of different sizes and different, you know, designs. A lot of them are kind of falling apart, but it still has like a nice vibe. And I feel like this house, this new building doesn't have that feel of it's not different enough. It's not detailed enough, but it it feels way too big to me. And it does feel like it's looming. And it seems really close to the house. And I it's hard for me that the tenants on either side would really want to be just staring into the windows of other people. So though, so I do have that kind of initial like it just it feels like that house is surrounding and almost, you know, the at the house, the building is surrounding and almost eating the little house or something. I don't, it doesn't look right to me.
Thank you, Janet. John?
Thank you. Yeah, you got to realize that that bump out area, so to speak, and behind the original house, the only section of that that's five feet away is eight feet wide by twenty two feet long. And that was added on when the doctors did the conversion of the house also, just to gain a handicapped entrance with a ramp and handicap bathroom. So that is like a shed roof on the back of that. And I think Rachel's trying to bring up the actual photo of the existing house in the back there showing that shed roof. So most of that building is thirteen feet away. And the way the roof is on the existing building. The second story will get plenty of sunlight coming down the roof line there. And the first story, we arranged the bedroom windows on the corner unit to be facing, that's about the only window that really faces that five foot separation area. The other areas will either look down to the west side of this house. Downward that gutter and pressure treated wood is or down the thirteen foot alleyway looking out to Main Street on the other end. That's a studio unit there. And the HVAC units are not big ones like we have next door. They're going to be like a suitcase size. Eleven inches wide, thirty three inches, I'm sorry. At thirty three inches wide, eleven inches deep and twenty two inches high. So they're going to be below the windows for the most part or in between the windows. So I understand what you're saying there. We I tried to work everything around that. So tenants were impacted, you know, negatively there.
Okay, thank you, John. Are there other board comments this evening? Or I'm wondering, it's just a short of ten o'clock, maybe we should call this the presentation for this evening and continue until a later meeting. Would anybody like to make any more comments this evening? All right. Would the would, are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment? I do see five public attendees who are still with us. Okay, not seeing any hands from, oh, there's one from Pam Rooney. Pam, could you give us your name and your address?
Hi Pam. Hi, Pam Rooney, forty two Cottage Street. I have a question about the number of parking spaces. And I'm curious what the the math is to to come up with the number that you have, because it sounds like you have, I think I heard someone say forty seven parking spaces. I didn't catch the number of dwelling units and I definitely didn't catch the number of bedrooms. And just wonder if you could elaborate. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. John, do you want to address that?
Yeah, did you want to get into all the data and so forth tonight or kind of give a basic rundown?
Why don't you give us a basic rundown? You know, we can study some of the material and talk about it in more depth at the next one.
All right, yeah, I appreciate your asking about that. When we built the building that was constructed last year, I did a lot of research early morning hours to find out how many parking spaces were actually used in the area of similar complexes. And then I did it again this year. And did the same complexes plus a couple more newer ones that are of similar size with the combined thing here. So the building that we did last year has thirty five bedrooms and it turned out, once everything was leased, there was only sixteen cars for the thirty five bedrooms. And there was thirty two parking spaces when it was approved. So we used kind of that same ratio and the average ratio of the data that I collected. Now to come up with this number of spaces, it's actually about four more spaces than that number comes out to be. So next meeting, I can certainly go over all the details on that, but it was through research and and looking at the way people work from home now and so forth and and that type of thing. And it's the location itself with a bus stop right on the premises, right out the front door. So it all comes together to to verify that forty seven spaces should work.
All right, thank you, John. All right, so we will pick up, pick this up at another meeting. Chris, do you have a suggestion for a date for this continuation?
I would suggest June fifteenth. June fifteenth, you have kind of a light load, among which are possible review of the dog park. Possible discussion about Article fourteen and how to carry that into the future. Legal ad fees and subdivision issue that will come up later in this meeting for a brief discussion.
Okay.
So
What time, what time would you propose?
There's nothing scheduled so far, so you could propose this for six thirty five.
So no chance of getting it on a June first?
No, June first is really packed. Unless you wanted to switch your subdivision to June fifteenth.
Mr. Marshall, Mr. Malloy also has
Yeah, yeah, I see his hand. I'm Nate, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, thanks. I mean, I was going to just ask, you know, there are some suggestions about reducing the massing facing Main Street, whether that's like a two story building or more articulation. And if that's something the board would want to see for the next meeting, you know, even a change in the building, what if it were, you know, wasn't an L shape, but some other different shape? My two other comments are that the the interior walls of the new building, right? So that courtyard with the old building, there's no articulation on the facade like there is on the other facades, right? Stepping back and other things. So that really is just a a wall facing the old historic house, you know, on the west side and the south side of the new building. And so you know, if there is more relationship to the current existing house, whether it's, you know, window patterns or, you know, the facade patterns of opening, closing windows, whatever. It really is just a, you know, a really big wall facing the old building. And then just, you know, the board didn't look at it much with the sign along Main Street. I just want to just call attention to it and how it is different than the existing sign and it, you know, is that a type of sign, you know, we'd want to see as we're coming up Main Street, is it? You know, is the style and design? You know, is that, is it also representative of of say, the vicinity and the home? So you know, I just wanted to call attention to that, you know, some site details, just if the applicants are coming back, if there's any comments like we did with EMS five. You know, the things that could be addressed next time.
Right. Well, thanks for bringing up the massing of the building. I I have to say that one of the things that went through my head was why are we keeping the existing house? You know, should this be a project that replaces the house and flips the L diagonally? So it fronts Gray Street and fronts Main Street. You know, then you've got interior courtyard behind it and plenty of room for your parking. Obviously, that would change the the look of the of Main Street with, you know, what has been a series of small houses, but we're we're losing that too. I'm not sure I'm really arguing for that. I'm simply saying that went through my head. It does feel like it's a it's a site plan that is just too cramped. So if you have some other ideas, John and team, you know, I think we probably would like to think about that.
Well, I think, you know, my my whole goal was I did think of tearing the house down and I went through that with the first one next door. And I thought, you know, it was more important for the neighborhood to kind of maintain the look of what that corner is versus something that's totally different. And as far as the sign, Nate, the Amherst Media sign is very similar to the one we're talking about here. Nothing like the post signs. It's a stone sign with the sign in in the center of it so forth. And that's going to be built right next door on the corner, the other corner in gray. So I understand the massive look that you're talking about. And that's really when you're looking front on from Main Street, when you're coming down Main Street or up Main Street. It kind of blends, you know, coming, especially coming down with the building we did last year. The roof line is going to be about the same. The houses on the west side of Gray Street are higher yet. Once the Amherst Media building goes up, it's going to kind of mask this whole thing. So it's it's a massive look from the front, I think. But it still has plenty of room. And I think it'll blend in nice the way it is. So that's kind of my thoughts when I was going through everything. I I did have a plan with putting the building in the front of the existing building and I played with all kinds of different ideas and this seemed to make most sense with trying to keep with what's there so the neighborhood doesn't change that much and blend it with some new.
All right, thank you, John. Chris?
Just wanted to point out that if there was a proposal to take down the existing house, I think there might also be a a risk of having a twelve month demolition delay on that. And I actually told Mr. Robleski that I thought it would be better to keep the existing house so that he would be able to keep some of the streetscape that already exists. So I just wanted to offer that. But there were changes made to the existing building to in response to comments that were received from the planning board, such as making the piece that faces Main Street be a smaller size. And so you can see that in this image here. The piece that is closest to Main Street is smaller and then it kind of steps up and steps up more or steps out more as you go towards the back. Then maybe that's something that can be Then maybe that's something that can be considered, some kind of diminution of this facade that's on Main Street and would help that to feel less monumental.
Thanks, Chris. I think that's, those are good, good points. Janet?
So I really hope you don't take down that building and change. I, I appreciate that you want to keep that, the kind of rhythm and the look of Main Street. And part of it is like every building on Main Street, you know, they're small, they're not really small. There's lots of really big buildings on Main Street. They all look different. And I think part of the thing is if you look at the building on the left, it has all these interesting and quirky details. And the new building has really almost none. And then the building next to it actually has some more, but it looks too much like it in a way. And so I just think you could do a lot more details. I do think it's way too big. But to make it an interesting front, so you're, you know, it's a, it's a building on Main Street. It should have a cool look. It should have architectural details and it just looks very flat. And I don't know, I just, you know, and, and, you know, so that, so I really do think it could fit in more. And I would urge you to do sort of more details. I don't have the right art, you know, language for that. But I'm kind of in that, I know when I see it, but every building on Main Street almost has some interesting thing. And the building that you tore down was one of the more interesting buildings. And so I don't want to lose that rhythm of different buildings. And these two side by side don't have that rhythm. And this building particularly doesn't have enough detail or interest, you know, to me. The other issue I have is there's like, is with the site, there's really no space for people to sit or gather or there's no, you know, I, I don't know, there's, you know, I thought that in the building that you had built that people could do, be in the backyards and, you know, have some places to sit and put a chair. Until I realized when I went to the site visit that there were no doorways out. And so nobody really was using that kind of green space in any way. And with this design, there's really no green space left for people except maybe the front lawn. And it made me wonder if the buildings, the new building could have like porches. So people could sit on porches, you know, along the side in the front, like a deeper porch or have a seating area in the front that invites people. But there's, you know, there's going to be hundreds of people living here and there's no communal space. You know, eleven East Pleasant had workout space inside. They had this very tiny courtyard. But is there some way to create a community out of this site and provide some recreational facilities and amenities for the tenants? It just looks like, you know, it looks like housing and there's nothing really for the tenants to, to have to live there. That is drive up or walk up and go in their room and come out. And I just, I, I felt like it could, you could create some more communal spaces that would create a good spirit.
Thanks, Janet. I, I did want to say I liked Chris's suggestion of looking at perhaps reducing the mass of the wing that faces Main Street, particularly on the end. I'm also, I've also been kind of puzzled or concerned about the two doors that fit, that are on that elevation, one of which is an office and the other of which is a residence. There, they look basically indistinguishable from each other. And, you know, it seemed like it might be appropriate to have a more, more of a distinction between the commercial entrance and the, the residential unit. That, that unit looks like you could probably move the front door around to the west side, which would, which would help with separation and, and might just save the resident from having a few people that are looking from the business from knocking on their door. So those are a couple more thoughts that you might consider before you come back. Rachel, I do see your hand. Why don't you go ahead?
So just responding to a few of those comments, I, I think that's a great suggestion about the entry to that unit. There was some consideration about having that unit be the option of having a second business space there. Should there be more demand for commercial space? I think what John has found recently, he, he has, the, the existing commercial space in the other building has not been filling. And, you know, there's, one of the wonderful benefits of having a lot of commercial space downtown is that, you know, people who want to have commercial space can be downtown and, and people out in this more residential area are looking more for residences. But, but that said, I think that is a great idea to move that door. And it still wouldn't defeat the option of having a, a second commercial space there if need be. And then in terms of the sitting area, I actually spent a good deal of time at John's property that's around the corner on High Street. We were good friends with one of the residents there. And I only once sat out in that backyard and never saw anyone in those backyards. And those are all built with very lovely back decks that have rear entrances to the backyards. And John created some really nice courtyard spaces there and there's just really never anybody in those outdoor areas. And, you know, I think there's, there, there's a lot to be said for creating community as, as Ms. McGowan mentioned and, and creating space to create that community. But, you know, as was mentioned also with the seating areas on Route nine, you don't want to build something that nobody's going to use. So I think one of the things that John is thinking about in creating this site here is that it's very, very much allowing the building to protect the back portion of the site. And, and then to create these green areas here that are, and that are taking advantage of the existing large trees that are there. And there could be some very nice sitting areas here. If people did want to sit outside, there's nice planted areas on that side of the building as well as the, you know, the backyard areas up here that are much quieter and away from all of the street views. So I think there are options for the tenants should they decide to change their ways and be more outward facing.
All right, thank you, Rachel. John?
Thank you. Yeah, and as I said, you know, from kind of day one on, on this, we saved a lot of the granite type capstones from the foundation that we demolished. My thought was to use those, number one, on the front sign for planting better around there. So we add that aspect of part of history, so to speak. And also, same thing I did next door at twenty-two High Street. I used some stones from an old barn there for plantings, planting beds and to make a couple of stone benches. The other thing to keep in mind, and I'm talking from a, a police perspective now. And I saw it just about a week and a half ago before graduation, further up Gray Street, where they had a nice big backyard. There was about thirty people back there playing beer pong and so forth. So when you think about creating areas that people can congregate in, I think you have to kind of keep that in mind. But again, as Rachel said, I've never seen anybody use those spaces over on High Street. A couple of people might have a grill now and then that you just put out back. Those have been an issue with melting the vinyl siding and that type of thing. They never clean them up. Initially on High Street, I had two picnic tables or a picnic area. They basically rusted and fell apart and stuff. We tried to maintain them. It just, I think people nowadays especially like their privacy and they have places to go and they go out the door and they just go. They're just the way it is. So I think having some areas like this and maintaining a nice shaded area where they do have an opportunity to sit is fine. But having too much, I think, is probably not a good idea.
All right. Thank you very much. So thank you, John and your team. I think we will. It is probably time to go ahead and continue this hearing. Would anybody like to make a motion to continue this hearing to June fifteenth at six thirty-five? Thank you, and I'll go ahead and second that. Any further discussion from the board? Rachel, you could stop sharing. Okay, not seeing anymore. Roll call vote. Maria? Jack or Tom, rather? Andrew? Janet? Johanna? And I'm an I as well. So, John, thanks very much. I hope you'll take some of our comments into consideration and we'll see you in, I guess, close to a month. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. The time is ten thirteen. And we will go to number six on our agenda. Old Business. Chris, S U B nineteen eighty-nine dash nine, The Meadows. You want to have any introduction to this?
Sure, I'll give you a little rundown on this. So The Meadows was built around the same time that Amherst Hills was built and built by the same developer. The Meadows has had similar issues with getting their infrastructure finished. And, you know, they're hoping to have their roads accepted by the town eventually. What I've heard from Tofino Associates and Ted Parker is that he definitely intends to make that his next project now that he's finished Amherst Hills. And yet the residents that of The Meadows are anxious to move the project along more quickly. So they've had their attorney Felicity Hardy submit this letter to the planning board in hopes that the planning board can help them to have a positive result like Amherst Hills had. And so I wanted to make sure that you saw this letter in a timely manner. But obviously you don't have time to really discuss it in depth tonight. So I told Ms. Hardy that we would put this on the agenda for June fifteenth. And that's really what I wanted to say tonight.
Okay. And, you know, we, you did send us some correspondence from, I think it was Mr. Parker and maybe his attorney. Will you be consulting with the town council at all on this before we talk about it or not?
I wasn't planning to. There's a lot happening in the next couple of weeks and I wasn't planning to get the town councillor involved. Unless you want me to. I think that Mr. Pill is probably correct that there's no mechanism by which the planning board could tie a, a decision on the Amherst Hill subdivision to a decision on the Meadows subdivision. So he's probably correct in that matter, but I think it was, you know, right of Ms. Hardy to bring this to your attention. And hopefully we can help that neighborhood group, you know, move towards success as well.
Okay. All right. Do any board members want to say anything about that this evening or are you fine with waiting to talk about it? In about a month. Johanna?
I just, it seems like we got, so Chris, I appreciate you saying that we can't kind of make one neighborhood decision contingent upon another decision. It, you know, I do feel like we got that letter, I think, either the same day or the day after we voted on the Amherst Woods decision and, I don't know, it just, it seems like you've done a great job ushering that one to resolution and I hope we can do the same thing here. And if we had been able to use Amherst Woods to leverage action on this, I don't know, it seems like it could have been an opportunity, but timing wise, we missed that. And then it sounds like you're saying that, that just wouldn't be kind of okay, one way or the other. Okay.
Chris, do you want to comment? It was Amherst Hills, right?
Amherst Hills, yeah. I just wanted to comment on the timing of this because, you know, we look at the planning board email before planning board meetings to make sure that we've caught everything. And so we looked at the planning board email before the meeting on May fourth and this document didn't show up. And for some reason, it came to us like the following Monday. And so that was very strange and we let Ms. Hardy know that. And it turned out that Ted Parker was copied on the email and his arrived several days after May third. So for some reason, this did not arrive in the planning department email on May third as it was indicated to have been sent. So that is a mystery how that happened. But in any event, it, we could not have tied Amherst Hills to this because they're really two completely separate situations. They're similar, but they're separate. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other old business that you want to bring up this evening?
No, no, thank you.
All right, how about new business item eight on our agenda?
I can't think of any new business.
Okay. Item nine, any upcoming Form A and R subdivision applications?
We have some upcoming. There are two upcoming that you'll see on June first. One has to do with the property on Pelham Road and the other one has to do with Archipelago Investments' property at eleven and thirteen East Pleasant Street. So you'll be seeing those on June first.
Okay. How about ZBA applications?
We actually do have some to present to you.
Okay, anything?
I'm just, I made a couple of slides because it's always so much for me to try to remember. So these three applications have come in very recently. They are going to go in front of the ZBA on June ninth. The first one is property at one hundred and three Pelham Road. And they are requesting a variance to allow subdivision of a parcel of land. And it looks like this. And what they want to do, so there are existing buildings on this property now. So one and two, so they're going to actually divide the property a little different. So this is it currently, right here. So here's parcel one. Here is parcel two. So this bottom piece is going to become part of lot two. And then they're just going to have this little piece up here is going to be lot one. So that's the first one. Secondly, is property at eighty-two Pomeroy Lane. And these folks are seeking a special permit to create a lag lot. So here it is here. This is the parcel. As you can see over here, they're proposing that the building circle would go here. This one also is pretty straightforward. And last but not least is property at seventy-seven North Whitney Street. So this is a request for a special permit to allow a new non-owner occupied duplex. And it would be a complimentary principal use to an existing one-family detached dwelling that's already existing on the property. So here's the property here. Here is the existing one-family residence. And what they're proposing is to add this duplex plan here. And it would be in front, so it would be up here in the front. So that's what's going to go in front of the ZBA on June ninth. And so if you are interested, we can ask these applicants to come in and provide you a presentation on any of the applications that you are interested in.
So Chris, this would need to be June first?
Yes, it would need to be. Yes, it would need to be. And June first is already chock full.
Yeah, this is already pretty, pretty full. Um, I know board members at, at twenty minutes after ten, you know. The invitation to take on more for our next meeting is not particularly exciting. Does anybody feel strongly that we need to get a presentation and? Make a recommendation to ZBA? Uh, Chris, I see your hand.
I just wanted to suggest that if people do feel strongly that they want to. See this presentation, they could attend the June ninth zoning board of appeals meeting and. They would be, um, free to comment as a member of the public at that time. So that's just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Janet?
Um, I'm interested in the first one and the third one both because they're sort of weird and they sort of remind me. Of the, um, College Avenue one where, you know. Building extra units on increasingly smaller lots, but I don't particularly want to pack the agenda. Um, of the next meeting. Could we hear it even though the Z could get a presentation? I'm, I'm sure the ZBA is not going to. Decide number one and three quickly. I, I, I don't know if I'm presuming that, but I, I think that. Could we hear it at a different meeting, Chris?
Um, we couldn't guarantee that the ZBA would continue the public hearing, but if you. Wanted to, I could make a suggestion to Maureen Pollock that if it is continued past June ninth. That you have an opportunity to hear a presentation.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. I mean, it's just, the first one just seems weird, but.
Well, you're going to see the first one as an A and R.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to see it as a, and that's, and that's essentially what it is. The. ZBA would be granting a variance to allow, um, the applicant to A and R the lot. So there's not going to be much more to the first one than that.
Is it, is it, it, is, is it dividing it to two hous- there's two houses. So one house would be on a very, very tiny lot.
That's right. Yes, but they're not adding anything to it. It's just.
Yeah.
Existing building that is going to be, um, on a different size lot.
Yeah, interesting.
This one on seventy-seven Whitney, North Whitney, that could potentially be. An interesting site design for you to look at and comment on.
So, all right. So, Chris, why don't you go ahead and have that conversation with? I'm blanking on her name.
Maureen.
Maureen, thank you.
That would only be for the first one and the third one for one of.
So, you know, just have her. Keep us in the loop and, uh, if they do not decide on their June ninth meeting, we can, we'd like to talk, we'd like to hear about it.
Okay, very good.
All right. Um. Upcoming, well, let's see. I'll just give you a time check. The time is ten twenty-five. Uh, upcoming SP, PSPR, SUB applications.
None that I know of.
All right. Uh. Number twelve, Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Jack is absent, so we don't need to hear from about PVPC. Uh, Andrew, anything on CPAC?
We're trying to schedule a meeting. Um. The chair threw out a couple of dates. I don't know if we'd landed on one yet, but it, we were looking at early June. So no updates other than that.
All right. Uh, Tom, Design Review Board.
No updates.
All right. Janet, Solar Bylaw. You are muted.
As far as I know, the committee has not formed, but I think they may get appointed on June ninth by the town council. But I'm not, I'm not super firm on that.
Okay, thank you. And then Chris, anything else on CRC?
CRC, um, is talking to the building commissioner about the rental registration bylaw and trying to. Come up with a new updated version of that. And that's what they talked about on. May twelfth. And as I told you before, they also voted to, um. Recommend the, um. Demo, uh, excuse me, the preservation of historically significant buildings. So.
Okay, great. All right. Um, I'm not going to have any report from the chair tonight. Uh, Chris, any report from staff?
Well, I just want to say that this length of this meeting differed substantially from the length of the last meeting.
Well, and it sounds like we're going to have a busy summer.
Yes, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
There's a lot happening in Amherst.
All right. Well, so thank you all for sticking with us and, uh. Yep, I'm feeling like yawning also.
Thank you, everybody.
The time is ten twenty-seven and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Nate.
Bye, everyone.
You all in June.
All righty, bye-bye.
Recording.
Good night.